Thank you and welcome to maybe the whole meeting for the District of Squamish for November 27th, 2018. I can squalamitz connect to that. Last Squamish away me. Of course, Kelsey is getting better. Welcome to the traditional non-seated territory of the Squamish Nation. We have an agenda for adoption council. This is a motion to move the agenda. Council French, Council Hurford, second, all in favor. Vote, motion carries. And the first item of business is Oceanfront Park update. Mr. Moore, it's yours. Oh, I personally just say, for those watching, I am not Mayor Elliott. I am Council Doug Race, the acting mayor this month. And we'll be chairing this meeting in the absence of Mayor Elliott. Carry on.
Good afternoon, Acting Mayor Race and Council. My name is Elaine Naesby. I'm a planner with Community Planning. This is Dave Marrow, Director of Major Projects. And we have Newport Beach Developments here with us today. We have Jess Herman and Carlos Zavarsay. And so Newport Beach Developments is going to be giving us an update on the Oceanfront Park. And District staff is going to take this opportunity to give Council a bit of a refresher on the Oceanfront Peninsula planning, the engineering, a bit of the state of where we're at at the Oceanfront. And then Newport Beach Developments will speak to the Oceanfront Park planning, where we're at, and next steps with that. So the Oceanfront Peninsula is located south of downtown at the mouth of How Sound. The Mamquambeau Blind Channel is to the east. The Catamool Slough is to the west. This is a photo from How Sound looking at the water lots and the land lots of the Oceanfront Peninsula. So looking to the north. And in this image, we see Nexon Beach at the south end of the Peninsula. You can also see Galbraith Road, which is currently in construction. Right, right in sort of the middle. The only buildings that are at the Oceanfront Peninsula right now are in use by Carbon Engineering. So the Oceanfront Development is, it was previously industrial land. Fifty-nine acres. There's an additional forty-four acres of water lots at Build Out, which is roughly a twenty-year time period. It is anticipated to have sixty-five hundred residents, roughly twenty-three hundred jobs, and twenty-one acres of parks and open space. So regulatory overview of the Oceanfront. In 2010, the district adopted the Oceanfront Peninsula Subarea Plan, which is a schedule to the official community plan. And so the Subarea Plan sets out the policies, the guidelines, the land uses. So essentially, the vision for the Oceanfront Peninsula. It also establishes development permit area number twelve, which is the Oceanfront. So that's sort of the highest level document. And then in 2011, the rezoning of the industrial lands began to bring them in line with the vision set out in the Subarea Plan. That zoning was completed in 2015, just prior to the district entering into a phased development agreement with Newport Beach Development, who is the developer and the owner of the lands down there. So the phased development agreement. Yeah, so the phased development agreement provides the district with certain amenities and secures the provision of services. It also provides the landowner with the land use assurances for that twenty-year period. I'll walk Council through the Subarea Plan at a very high level. So again, the south in this image is to the left-hand side of the screen. So we can see that the Peninsula is surrounded with an oceanfront walkway. That's that green band around the outside. The Oceanfront Park that we'll be discussing today is at that south end. And as we can see, that red line is the existing land boundary. So the Oceanfront Park is actually being built out into the water. The dotted red line is the boundary of the water lots. And so the different colors that we see, all of the shades of sort of yellow and orange are essentially residential use. So that's largely located to the north end of the Oceanfront Peninsula. The blue, the dark blue, right in the middle, is education use. The light blue, thanks. That's an employment block, so primarily employment uses there. The purple, just to the west of that, is also employment with more of a marine focus. And then the red village center is closest to the Oceanfront Park, activating the park, providing a destination at the mouth or at the water's edge. And that's sort of envisioned as sort of a Granville Island lively, commercial area. So the, so the following the Subarea Plan, the zoning, the first thing we notice is that the zoning was for the Newport Beach Development owned land. So there are parts of the Oceanfront Peninsula Subarea Plan that have not yet been rezoned. But the zoning in question, you can see the colors, the different land uses largely relate to the Subarea Plan. And so the zoning provides that greater level of detail. It lays out the specific land uses, the density, the height, the siting for those different blocks. And again, so the zoning is actually broken into blocks. We have blocks A to I. And so that's how Comprehensive Development Zone number sixty-nine, which is the Oceanfront, is broken down. We've got those different employment, commercial, residential, education, parks uses that have their specific regulations. So the Subarea Plan, this image was developed around the time of the Subarea Plan. So a little while ago now, around 2010. And so that vision does allow some flexibility to evolve over time. And so as the Oceanfront developer moves forward with the Oceanfront Park, there are development permit applications on the horizon for residential and other uses. So Newport Beach Developments is currently engaged in a process to refine the Subarea Plan related to individual building parcels through an internal master planning process. And the master plan will provide a detailed overview of all development on the Peninsula so that each development permit application that we receive is in the context of a bigger picture. And that master plan is actually going to our advisory design panel on December thirteenth. So in a couple of weeks. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Dave Marrow to talk about the PDA.
Thanks Elaine, and good afternoon. As Elaine mentioned, the PDA is an agreement between the district and the developer. And it basically lays out the requirements for the development. One of the key features of the PDA is that, as Elaine mentioned, it locks in the zoning bylaw and the subdivision and development control bylaw from 2015 for a period of twenty years. And essentially what that does, it allows the developer to proceed and undertake this large development with some level of certainty that the goalposts with respect to district requirements aren't going to move. Another key aspect of the PDA is that it lays out, describes, and provides timelines for amenities that the developer must provide as part of the development. And I'll just highlight some of the key ones here, one being the Oceanfront Park that we're going to talk about in greater detail later in the presentation. So essentially, the Oceanfront Park, it needs to be provided before occupancy of the first tourism facility or residential building. Tourism facility is essentially described as, or defined as, something that draws tourists to the Oceanfront, which could include an art gallery, a museum, strangely enough, a palace or castle. The likely trigger will probably be a residential building. The PDA also lists components of the park that must be included. I've just listed a handful here, but I believe Carlos might go through the list in more detail later on. Oceanfront Beach, a separate windsports beach, a meadow, a dune grass area, pathways, and boardwalk, and native shoreline planting and intertidal habitat, are a few of sort of the key components that this park must have. The PDA also outlines the requirements that the developer has to take with respect to community outreach and consultation during the park planning or design phase, which again, we'll hear more about later on. It also sets the requirements for a sailing center associated with the park and what that sailing center needs to encompass, and the fact that that must be transferred to a community group. Another amenity included in the PDA is the waterfront public walkway, which Elaine alluded to earlier. It's essentially a scenic stroll around the perimeter of the Peninsula that'll link with the other waterfront trails in downtown. It also lays out requirements for public art. There are three separate installations that are required, worth fifty thousand dollars each. And those are delivered with the development, the first building permit, I believe, of lots six, seven, and eight, which are sort of located in the southeast portion of the Peninsula. In addition to those three installations, there is the requirement for a Land's End Monument, which is anticipated to be sort of a nice piece of art right at the very end of the Oceanfront Park. And that will be included as part of the delivery of the park. I thought it highlights some of the schedules that are attached to the PDA. I'll list a few of the notable ones here. The first being the subdivision servicing covenant, which essentially requires that prior to a building permit, they need to either, the developer needs to either build or provide security for the main road into the site, as well as the services within that road. Floodproofing covenant, which establishes the height at which buildings need to be constructed to ensure that they're above flood levels. Environmental contamination covenant. Obviously, the historical land use of the site has left some ugly remnants in the soil. So remediation has occurred in the past and continues to be investigated and will continue to occur. So essentially, this says that for any lot that's developed, the remediation must be complete and a certificate of compliance must be received from the province prior to building permit for that lot. Industrial covenant. There are some nearby industrial neighbors, the terminals being one, and the log sort operations being another. So this covenant requires that noise assessments must be completed for the lots and any findings of those assessments need to be incorporated in building design to ensure that they remediate noise from these industries. As well, the covenant is there to basically advise residents who are buying property on the Oceanfront that there are these nearby industrial neighbors which generate noise and light. Finally, rental pool covenant, which essentially provides an allowance for seasonal or temporary rentals within certain lots, the residential lots, I guess, lot one, two, and nine. And this was, as I'm sure you're aware, the short-term rental review is ongoing and this rental covenant is being considered as part of that review. I thought I'd take a brief moment to update you on construction that's happening, has happened, and will continue to happen down there. Anyone who's been down there knows that a lot of earth movement is occurring. So things really got underway last year with the first major off-site DCC project that the developer front-ended. And that was an upgrade to the existing sanitary sewer along Vancouver Street and a portion of Third Avenue, to basically upgrade it, oversize it for future increased flows from the development. In addition, the main road into the site, Galbraith, was preloaded, as Elaine mentioned earlier, which basically raises it to the future elevation that it will be at, but also provides settlement for the compressible, the soft soils underneath. In conjunction with that, it's been ongoing and will continue for quite some time as site filling activities. So for this site, which is a coastal site, the flood mitigation measure is not similar to other sites such as the downtown area, which is built, which has a dike surrounding it to keep water out. For coastal sites in the district, we're taking a different approach, which is essentially to raise the entire site to an elevation at which, with a meter of sea level rise, it will still be above the elevation, a flood elevation. So this entire site needs to be raised approximately two and a half to three meters with fill to get it up to that level where no flooding will occur. So significant amount of fill is being brought on site, which has been overseen by a geotechnical engineer to ensure that the fill is appropriate and that fillings be done, being done at appropriate manner. So current work, right now, there's a contractor on site who is bringing in water sanitary sewer and storm sewer into the development from Vancouver Street down to approximately where Carbon Engineering is located. We're currently, the design's complete, and we're planning for a water main connection under the Catamool Slough, which will tie into the Third Avenue access road to the terminal and will essentially provide adequate fire flows to the development. There is also, Main Road will be completed likely early next year, the preload, all the way to the Oceanfront Park. In order to do this, Carbon Engineering's existing office building needs to be removed because it's right in the alignment of the road. So currently, they're going through a temporary use permit to relocate to a temporary office facility on the Oceanfront. Environmental investigation work continues, as I mentioned. Recently investigated work was done on lots one and two in the northwestern part of the site and throughout the site, monitoring continues as well. Design work is ongoing related to road networks and services for the residential, commercial, and light industrial lands on the Oceanfront. And, as we'll talk about more obviously, design work and planning and construction within a reasonable timeframe will be completed for the Oceanfront Park. Finally, it's difficult to see because of the lighting here, but this is a fairly recent picture, similar to what Elaine provided. Thank you, Kelsey. Which shows some of the site activities that have occurred. As you can see here, this is the main road, Galbraith, that's been preloaded. So that's been raised, like I said, about two and a half meters. This will be the site of a future road, we're calling Road B. The Catamool Water Main will connect roughly in that alignment. And this is the temporary access road that's currently used to access the site. And filling activities have occurred in here and in these areas as well. With that, I'll pass it over to Carlos, who will provide an overview of the Oceanfront Park.
Just before we start, Carlos, the PDA can be amended and the zoning bylaw can be amended, notwithstanding. Could you just explain the process for that?
Absolutely. Essentially, it just needs to be agreed upon between both parties. So if the developer and the district identify a need to amend either of those documents, it could be done so, but it just needs to be done with each other.
But one can do it up here, go ahead.
Just for substantive amendments, it does need to go to the inspector of municipalities for approval.
Any questions at this point, Council, with that? What would be your thoughts?
Thank you. Yeah, you want, yeah. Thank you so much for the opportunity to come speak to you today. I know our office is incredibly excited about bringing this park online, as I'm sure you are and all of Squamish is. My name against Carlos Zavarsay. I'm a planner with Newport Beach Developments. And this is Jess Herman, and she's an engineer. So the park has been a topic of discussion in Squamish for quite a while. It likely began well before 2004, but in 2004, public consultation began on the Oceanfront Park and was largely driven by the SODC, which you've probably heard before, is the Squamish Oceanfront Development Corporation. And they were a arms-length agency created by the district, essentially for the purpose of packaging and selling the Oceanfront site, the Oceanfront site that Newport Beach Developments eventually purchased. Secondary exercise took place, which was create the Oceanfront, which was more of a charrette exercise about what people wanted to see down in that area. And the park was something that kind of bubbled up from the surface and from the majority of the community that they wanted access to the water and they wanted a way to engage with the water, which is something we don't have currently. That task was largely spearheaded by district staff from 2008 to 2010. The resulting plan was a plan produced by PWL, which is a landscape architecture firm, and KWL, which is an engineering firm. And this was really a preliminary plan, a preliminary shot of what was going to be built down there. And this, I'm sure you've seen this before, but this was the plan. And this is where we get those items that Dave referenced in the phased development agreement, those items that we have to provide the community with before the park is deemed complete. And I'll just run through the main points. You know, in this corner, you've got a windsports beach or a watersports beach, and also a public beach, a larger, secondary larger public beach. You have dune grass areas and areas meant for seating. There's a children's play area. Event space and open space was envisioned in this plan. And then a ramp here and storage facilities for a sailing center, among others. And of course, they had originally asked for a three-meter path, crushed gravel path, to be brought through the site, but we've made some minor changes to that, which we'll discuss in a little bit. But the idea being that eventually you'll be able to go along our waterfront downtown onto the waterfront along the Mamquambeau for the Oceanfront, through the park and all the way around. So in our office, when we, you know, we have this requirement to complete community consultation, which was one public open house. But we decided that, you know, it had been almost seven years since we went to the community to see if this is still the park that they wanted to have us build. And so we decided to do a multi-pronged approach for some community engagement, which involved an online survey, which received over a thousand responses. Ninety percent of those were from Squamish residents. We also hosted some information booths that were attended both by Newport Beach Development staff as well as the district staff. Went to a couple of farmers markets, a circus social ride, Wind Fest, and Brackendale Fall Fair. And then through that, we actually came back to council and we were encouraged to continue discussions with certain groups. And so we had some targeted sit-downs with groups within the community that you can see there. And that allowed us to really drill down into specific opportunities in the park that we tried to integrate into this updated plan. Overall, what we heard from the community was that there was a strong agreement with the existing Subarea Plan and the way that the park was expressed there. Any additional facilities in the park, we were encouraged to ensure that they cater to families because there are many growing families in Squamish. We were told to focus the marine use of the park on non-motorized vehicles, so sailboats, kayaks, canoes, of course, kiteboards and windsurfers as well. And to provide adequate parking, because we all know parking is an issue downtown, and also pickup and drop-off, so ways for people to get their equipment down to the water. And finally, at least last but not least, is to pursue opportunities for community events and art-focused events in the park. And with that, pass it over to Jess.
Thank you, Ms. Carlos. So after we wrapped up our first round of community consultation, we retained Anchor QEA to basically take the PWL plans and bring them to life. So a little bit about Anchor QEA. They're based out of Seattle and they've done a bunch of shoreline redevelopments and developments along the Washington coast. Notably, they have a very similar project in Bellingham, the Port of Bellingham, remediating an old chloral plant into a multi-use development. So they did, they're involved in a lot of the shoreline cleanup and redevelopment there. And so they're one of the leading coast engineering firms in the United States and that's why we chose them, based on their past experience. So, oh, there you go. So this is a rendering of the new plan that we came up with, with Anchor alongside the district and some of the public consultation. So you'll notice there are some major changes that deviate from the PWL plans, largely around the alignment of the windsports beach there. Technology, thank you. So there's some notable changes that happened since that original plan. The first would be the provincial guidelines to add one meter of sea level rise. So that took the beach from four meters to about five meters to tie into the adjacent development. Another thing that we acquired was the local wind data, which shows the wind direction predominantly from the southwest rather than the south direction, which is what we had used for the KWL design. How that affects the orientation of the beach is that we've aligned them to be facing that direction and adding the two ruins helps to retain the sediment. So what that means is from a maintenance standpoint, that the beach isn't going to wash away. You don't actually see that, you're not going to end up in the river. So what we used too is we used more cobble material rather than sandy material. So we'll have sand sort of in the back areas above high water for recreation purposes and then have some larger, or I guess smaller cobbles retained in this area. So here's a rendered plan of the park. What you can see is this still captures not only the public engagement, but also some of the elements from the PDA. So this graphic here shows some elements. So in the yellow, we have the two beaches, the first one, this being a public beach. This one would be more restricted for water and windsports access. In the green areas, we have some of the habitat features. So we have an intertidal habitat bench here, as well as some dune grasses and some of the rocks and things. This area is where the Land's End Monument is. And then in purple, we have the open space and the recreation space for the windsports users. The trail here connects, as we mentioned earlier, into the adjacent development. We sized the trail to be a bit bigger, so it's four meters. And for accessibility, it will be paved rather than crushed rock. In this area, there's a children's playground. And then we added in a washroom and covered shelter space here near the entrance. So as, this is the main road here that we saw the joke earlier. And then it connects into a pickup and drop-off area in an open plaza. What we tried to accomplish here is have a connection to the Village Commons so we can provide events of different sizes and look at shutting down the roads in the future when the adjacent development comes online. We've also added in parking areas up here and access to the future sailing center, which will be located around here. This is the same location as the boat rammed the ocean in the PWL drawings. And we also added in a dock, a floating dock, which will provide, which is more accessible for sailing events. So next steps with our process, it was quite a timely meeting. For us, we're looking to submit the first application for the DFO. And then we've also reached out to Transport Canada through the Navigation Protection Act. We've been working alongside the Ministry of Environment to address the residual contamination on site and notify the Environmental Assessment Office. So if that all goes to plan, we are hoping to start construction next summer during the fishing windows. And we're also holding an open house this Thursday, from six to eight p.m. for the public. So we hope that we can all see you there.
Anchor or QEA will be in attendance as well.
Council, any questions, comments?
On the other side of the waterfront, the Squamish terminals in the mouth of the river, windsports and terminal activities have been a learning experience over the decades and they have good protocols in place now we can trust. And there will be an evolution of how we can work best on the other side of the estuary and the waterfront in the Mamquambeau Blind Channel. I would encourage, and perhaps conversations have already taken place, the liaison with the three companies involved in log handling in the channel. I think they'll be very happy with the considerations you've already made. But I would encourage that you never know what we don't know yet about issues that may come up regarding interface between log handling and windsports. One thing I can suggest is that one of those unpredictable things is the weather. And sometimes we have winter storm where, which might be exciting for windsurfers, but it also means that log handling needs to adapt and there have been interface issues in the past due to, caused by those weather events. So I would just encourage then liaison with the log handling community over the long term in the operation of the windsports facilities and beach.
Just out of curiosity, with the raising up the space with fill, does that mean we, in some cases, will be avoiding some remediation work to the soil and just covering it up, or are those requirements the same either way?
They're sort of hand in hand. So when Nexon Chemicals shut down in 1992, the Ministry of Environment issued a remediation order. So they took on the environmental liability and I think spent almost upwards of forty million dollars cleaning it up to the point that they could physically get to. So I assume that site is the high groundwater table. They'd gone through a whole pump and treat and to empty it. They'd gone through a whole pump and treat and shipped off a bunch of contaminated material offsite. So now what, how the residual mercury is dealt with is through ongoing monitoring as well as capping the site so that it's, so that there's no, the impact to receptors is greatly reduced. So that in a sense is finishing the remediation. But the actual physical remediation is, as I understand, is as much can be done.
That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a minute, I just need to load up presentations, so one second please. Thanks. Anytime you're ready.
Thank you. So we'll continue on. We may have just sort of coasted to that little pause, but the item on the agenda is the district paving master plan.
Yeah, great, thank you. So my name is Jesse Morwood and I'm presenting the pavement master plan. This is my first time presenting to this council, so I just want to give a quick introduction of the capital projects team and what we do. So basically, there's four of us, Jamie McCarthy, John Allen and Josie Anne Waugh. And to simplify, I like to think of us as project managers. And what we're managing is infrastructure delivery. So that's the full gambit of all the capital projects that the district does is we're often involved in. So that can be the vertical landfill expansion, that can be sewer and water projects, that can be the act of transportation, such as the new Buckley Trail that's going in front of Hossan Secondary, fiber conduit, line painting and of course, pavement. Just, we do big and small projects, so I just wanted to show you one of the small projects we did. It's, I think it's a pretty cool project. And this is one that Josie Anne actually built. And it's a good representation of, it started as a design by an elementary student in Valley Close. And we took it from a design, a concept, and turned it into a piece of infrastructure that now that we own. And I think it's a good kind of representation of what we do, is we take concepts, ideas and designs and make them part of our infrastructure. We certainly do a lot of the project delivery, but we don't do it all. So I just want to highlight that David Rolston, who I believe you know, as well as Devin, are also helping us deliver projects. So before we get into the pavement management plan, I just want to also, Josie Anne Waugh, she's our project manager for paving and she did also kind of manage getting this study to where it is today. So I'm not sure if she's here, she's here. So full kudos to Josie Anne for all the work she did. So I have some council learning goals or what I'm hoping to convey to council today. And first question is, why do we need a master plan? What does this plan cover? And why do we need to adequately fund the annual paving program? And certainly my overall objective today is to get council to endorse this plan. So first question, why do we need a pavement master plan? Surprisingly, we have quite a lot of roads in Squamish, 120 kilometers of roads in fact. And so we need some way to manage it. And effectively, a pavement management plan is an asset management plan that provides us with a blueprint to manage our inventory over the long run. So it provides a snapshot of the condition of our network. It tells us how much we need to budget in order to maintain the network and it gives us a detailed work plan. So simplifying that, it allows us to plan our paving projects from here to into the future. It allows us to come to council and ask for, certainly know how much money to ask for council for budgets. And at the end of the day, we all know that if we follow this plan, we know what condition our road network is going to be in the future. So we, sorry, going back, we previously did have a study that was completed in 2010. And it's basically, you know, the longer, the further we get, you get away from these studies, the more they become out of date, especially if you're not following them exactly. So we found that this year, this year was time to update the plan. So on that note, we hired Tetra Tech, who are based out of the city and are certainly a leader in the field. One kind of point of terminology is, I attached the Tetra Tech study to this presentation. It's called something slightly different. What I'm calling it is the paving master plan because we have other master plans for water and sewer that I believe that was presented here today. And it also kind of, it's more understandable as the importance of the, of the plan and what we're trying to achieve. So what's actually in this plan? Tetra Tech actually drove 120 kilometers of roads we have in Squamish with this, with their truck with all these fancy sensors on it. And it picked up a whole bunch of different kind of characteristics of the roads, such as rutting, puddles, ravelling, cracking. It picked up the smoothness of the road and as well, it took photos of the road every six meters. So just, just point of interest, it's quite sophisticated, it's got all those lasers, those back lasers are basically creating a 3D map of our road. So they drove the road and what it produced is, it produced, they were able to take all that data and put it into graphs, so we could kind of understand in a snapshot what our, what our asphalt road network looks like. So certainly the blue and the green is, is roads that are in very good conditions. And then as you get into the warmer colors, you know, those are roads in less good conditions. PCI stands for Pavement Condition Index. And it's, it's basically taking a whole bunch of the different metrics, the characteristics of the road condition and kind of putting it into one formula. There's some other, at the bottom of the graph there, there's some, some acronyms. COL stands for, COL stands for collector. Collector Road is like, like a major road, like government road that has certain characteristics like higher traffic volumes, transit routes, that kind of thing. LOC is a local road, so it's, it's those kind of small neighborhood roads. And combined, the big roads and the small roads is what our network is. So the great thing that by hiring Tetra Tech, they also did our study in 2010. So they were actually able to compare what our roads kind of looked like in 2010 to what our road looks like today. So one of the metrics they compared was the cracking that we had in 2010 versus the study that was done this year. And I can't read those figures, but you can see the colors. The top graph was the 2010 condition of our roads as far as cracking and the bottom is 2018. And just by looking at the colors, you can see that the, the top graph is a lot more green and blue, which means our roads were basically in better condition than they're in today. That was one of the significant findings of the, of their study. They also digging in to the research a little bit. They had, in 2010, they had recommended a certain budget for annual paving program and, and it turns out that we didn't actually have enough funding to budget to that amount. And consequently, our roads are in worse condition today than they are, were in 2010. So second part of answering the question, what's in the plan, is they did a life cycle cost analysis and, and basically the, the objective of any pavement management plan is to provide and preserve the pavement as economically as possible. So basically, it's what's it cost to maintain our network is what a life cycle cost analysis is doing. There are many inputs that go into this, such as what type of road rehabilitation you're using. Each type of rehabilitation has different longevities and purposes. And certainly, the older the road gets, the higher the maintenance costs are. I hope this isn't too complicated, but I put, they provided a graph that, that may kind of help understand what I'm, what I'm saying. The black line is, that kind of curved black line is basically saying, when you pave a road, it's in really good condition, but over time, it obviously gets worse. And what also happens is that the maintenance costs go up as the pavement gets worse. Blue and red kind of peaks and troughs there are, what those are is pavement kind of intervention activity. So, you know, as a road gets older, you can, you can do something about it. You can go in and pave. And there's certainly different types of ways that you can pave a road. And that's what the difference between the blue and the red lines is, is different kind of intervention measures. They have different costs associated with them and they have different life expectancies. So the other thing they did is they, they did the perfect world scenario. So let's say we had unlimited budget, how much would it cost to get all those roads that were in the yellow and red in those poor conditions, all our roads that are in poor conditions? How much would it take to pave all those roads and get all our roads in good condition and then to maintain those roads? This is kind of used as kind of our base case. And the answer is, it's going to take 11 to 12 million dollars to get all our roads that are in poor condition into good condition. And then it'd be a varying amount of annual budget to kind of maintain it at an optimal level. We certainly realized that this isn't practical to get 12 million dollars from council next year. So the next question was, well, if we can't get 12 million dollars, what would it take? How much money would it take on an annual basis to maintain our pavement infrastructure at its current level for the future? And the answer from Tetra Tech's study is actually 1.3 million dollars. We also had them kind of project some of our, our current and past budgets on this graph to say, if we, you know, got the same of funding as we did this year, what would be the consequence or the effect on the long-term network condition? I mean, the reality is, we had about a million dollars this year. The reality is that if we continue to get, spend a million dollars on asphalt, it would actually be significantly worse in 20 years. It would, the backlog costs, which is all those roads in poor condition, would actually be about 19 million dollars in 20 years. So our roads would be getting worse over time, or our network would be getting worse over time. The dotted line, it's kind of hard to see, is actually a staged budget, so it's kind of a combination. And that's what the next slide is, so I'm just going to go into that. And it's the one that actually we're recommending because it's actually a graduated increase in our budget and I think it's a lot more palatable for, for council. It was also based on, in 2017, council endorsed a five-year financial plan. And in that financial plan was a paving plan that had increases over, over a number of years to increase the amount we're spending. And it is what we had to work with for this year. So what we're recommending is 2019 budget of 1.1 million dollars and it would go up to 1.35 over a five-year period. And then it would hold steady at a, at a five-year period, sorry, hold steady over the long term. And going back to this graph, it would, it would in 20 years, maintain the current level of the pavement network. So the third thing is, what's in the plan is, is they took all this data and they made us an actual work plan. The assumptions or the inputs were that we want to maintain the current level, so we're going to maintain that, use that staged budget as, as a, as a plan. We prioritize certain roads over others because some are more important, such as collector roads, government roads, if it has more traffic on it and, and facility transit, as well as there are different kind of, many different kind of inputs, such as different rehabilitation strategies that go into the plan. So it produced a whole bunch of outputs for us, specifically tailored to the district of Squamish. Here's a quick excerpt from what was produced. You know, obviously it has the different roads, but it's, you know, as you can see, it's broken up into many different segments. So one segment might only be 200 meters and that's the reason is that the road had different characteristics. You know, the machine that, that drove all the roads said, you know, this segment is different than this segment and you need to treat them differently. It talked about different rehab methods, what year approximately that they recommend that it needs to be done and how much proximity that's going to cost. So we're able to take all this data and come to council, for example, and, and ask for certain budgets based on this report. So I just want to kind of come back to, why do we need to adequately fund the annual paving program? And certainly, we have a big network and it needs to be maintained and that's kind of the obvious answer, but there's a few more nuances to that, to that question. As I mentioned, as you, as a road gets in worse condition, you actually have to spend more on maintenance. I like to think of it, it's kind of like your mortgage, your kind of principal versus interest. The more you, the bigger your mortgage is, the more the money's going to the interest, it's actually not going to the mortgage. And it's kind of like that with maintenance, the worse a road gets, the more you're actually just trying to hold that road together than actually having to deal with the issue. The other big piece of it is, the pavement condition actually affects the road integrity. So what that means is, as a road gets in worse condition, your rehab costs over time actually go up. It's, a road that's in really poor condition actually takes more to get it up to a level than a road that's in not a poor condition. So a road is built up of many different layers. That's what the diagram on the right kind of shows. So, you know, imagine a scenario where the pavement starts getting cracked and water kind of gets in there and starts breaking apart the road even more. What happens is those cracks and those issues in the road actually migrate down and they affect each subsequent layer below it. So going back to the photo on the left, you can't just put two, two inches of asphalt over top of that, that road on the left. Now you have to dig down, you have to replace all those bottom layers and really build up the road and that significantly increases your costs. So what the report, by following the, sorry, the, the master plan, is it kind of gives us that optimal strategy to stay ahead of the curve and to most effectively spend our money to maintain, to maintain our roads. Hope that makes sense, those are most of them. So coming back to our recommendation, staff is recommending that council endorses this pavement management study or the pavement master plan, sorry, pavement management plan, that's the new master plan.
Before I go to council, this amount of money you suggested, 1.1 million in the first year and then that one, that just maintains the road condition in its present state? Does it move those colors on as far as at all?
Sorry, the 1.1?
Well, starting with that, those numbers. But my understanding, your description of that was that would maintain the present condition?
Yeah, sorry, no, by, by spending, having a budget next year of 1.1 million, the overall road condition gets a little worse. But what we're proposing is that we're increasing it over time so that we'll recover that, the condition, the overall network that got worse in that first couple of years to get better in the long run.
So if you look at, down is, down is good. That's the backlog of millions of dollars worth of, of bad roads, basically. Right now, we're at 11 million dollars backlog. If you wanted to snap our fingers and this year and get everything to a good condition, it costs 11 million dollars. If you watch the dotted green line, as it moves to the right year by year, that's the staged budget, the 1.1, 1.2, 1.3. And so you can see that it basically holds around 11, gets a little bit worse and then drops down to eight in 2034, is that?
2024. And that's, that corresponds with that kind of full budget amount that we're asking is 1.35. That's when the overall condition starts going down because you're, because you're adequately funding the program. Does that make sense?
Does that move the color bars up?
It keeps them, it, it keeps them the same until 2028. And then they start moving up until about 2035 and then they start getting worse again.
So maybe go back.
This is a, it's all the status quo.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to maintain status quo. I think, you know, we, ideally, we want to get better, but we're saying a minimum to maintain the status quo, we need in the long run about 1.35 million annually.
I was just wondering for clarity on your question after my raise around color bars, are you referring to the cylinder, the different figure?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, not the graph. So either one of those ones. So we've got the top two colors to be not favorable. And my question is, if we spend this amount of money and embark on this program, do we start moving the greens and blues up so they take a larger percentage of the cylinder?
No, what, what that 1.35 million dollars over the long run will do is kind of maintain this. We're always going to have, we're always going to have some roads that are in poor condition. You know, in order, in order to get rid of those, those warm colors, we would have to have a big outlay of funds initially to kind of get rid of those.
So business case doesn't matter to do that?
I guess that's, that's a balance, that's up to, up to council. And that's one of the balances of how bad are the roads? And I guess we're, we are proposing a plan that maintains the status quo. It gets, so the badness gets a little bit worse over the next couple of years and then it gets a little bit better and then it kind of comes back up. it gets a little bit better, and then it kind of comes back up. If, you know, and that's a balance on, that was our assumption that we don't want the roads to get much worse. More budget would allow us, you know, for every extra dollar that goes in, we can move the needle a bit better over time. Right now, the backlog is 11 million dollars.
Council? Eric?
Chris?
The step three, creating a multi-year work plan, refers to coordination with other capital works, and I'm wondering about coordination with other plans or agreements. And I'd like to refer to three examples, and just, I'm wondering how the master plan document will refer to them or take them into account. The three examples, I'm drawing from Figure C1, the five-year paving plan, the chart. And firstly, there is a part of Loggers Lane, on the northern end of Loggers Lane, near, well, near the area vicinity of Pemberton intersection. In the development cost charges by law project list, that is identified as in that list. And so we have two plans referring to this project, if I'm not mistaken. The second example I have is Clark Drive, also showing on that chart, C1, happens to be in my neighborhood. And I'm aware that that, I'll call it the middle section of Park Drive, it's kind of a complicated route, but the middle section between Scott Road, sorry, Scott Crescent and the upper part of Burner Drive. So there's a middle section of Park Drive that is highlighted here as a priority for 2019, 2020. That stretch of road is part of a land development agreement with Kingswood Scott Crescent project, and it will involve in that land development agreement some upgrading, including presumably the paving. The third example, just briefly, is a paving project that has been discussed for at least a decade, is from Beatty Street to Government Road. And it's highlighted in your chart, various sections of it. So the third scenario, I wonder how the master plan takes into account, is, what if we change our idea about, right now it's identified as a local road, but we might determine that it should be a collector road and be upgraded? How is the master plan taking into account other plans and other scenarios that may evolve over its term?
Through the mayor, thank you for the question. Certainly, this is a guideline, and I think it's going to, always going to fluctuate a little bit. You know, it's a planning document, we're going to try to follow it as closely as we can, but again, there are going to be some deviations. The plan can be updated, we would have to go through Tetra Tech to do that, but it's something certainly that we can do on an annual basis, or, sorry, we can do as needed, as frequently, I think, as an annual basis. There are certainly going to be other, lots of moving parts. It takes into consideration, like you said, certain aspects of other capital projects that are going on, certainly internally. When an external project comes, and maybe it's a DCC project or a development project, maybe there's an opportunity to get that portion of the paving work done for us, or done through a different avenue, in which case, you know, we'll cross it off our list and we'll move it down to the next priority. Or as Mayor, sorry, as Councilor Race was saying, that maybe we can take off one of those roads that are in the red kind of category, and we can get a half road program, which I think would be a win.
So I just add to that, the plan did take into account our other capital works, the required subservice capital works. There aren't very many DCC projects that would be, I don't believe they looked at the one or two DCC projects. We do typically get a half road in front of a, upgraded in front of a development. There are very few developments that we do receive an extended service, such as the one you pointed out. We don't, we didn't take those into account. We don't really know what the future holds, as far as those developments, and they come and go, and go on hold for years at a time. It's very hard to predict those developments. As far as, you mentioned Bailey, I think the only piece of road that we are planning to pave that isn't currently paved is Pioneer Way, which is a DCC project. The Bailey, we don't own that, that piece of road, it's actually DCW property, so there aren't any current plans to upgrade to a paved surface on that road.
Fair to say this would cover maintenance, not new construction?
Correct.
Chris?
I have a whole bunch, maybe, one at a time, and probably cut off. So I guess, Bill and Eric could point a bit, I take it that this is a bit of the floor of the estimate, and we'll probably see the sort of number required in future years will go higher, like, as we have more infill, will be more traffic on the existing roads, and so they'll deteriorate maybe a little faster than we're going to assume. I think these are today's dollars, so with inflation and stuff, it may go higher. And, you know, with climate change, more climate extremes, the roads may deteriorate faster than they are today. So is that sort of a safe assumption that it probably will go a bit higher in future years?
Yes, through the mayor, yeah, I think that is fair. You know, we did, we did an assessment with the best technology we could today, and made assumptions based on what we know today. You know, if there's significant changes, a neighborhood could increase in density significantly, that's going to have impacts on the roads, and we couldn't forecast that in this plan because we don't necessarily know all those moving parts. But, so yes, that's a fair assumption.
Eric, another shot?
Okay, so I read, and I'm not sure the timing, but that council had prioritized collector roads previously, and then it looks like, from the reporting, collector roads have actually deteriorated faster than local roads, and I'm just wondering if you can speak to that?
One, I can't speak to the prioritization, I'm not sure on that one. But certainly, collector roads deteriorate faster in general. Essentially, all the impact to the road is either through freeze thaw, or trucks, and buses. Cars are light enough, they elastically deform the road, they don't degrade it. So it is on those larger roads where you can see the faster degradation.
Councilor Stoner, I'll come back.
My question builds on that methodological question. In the report, they used a priority factor of three for collector roads versus one for local roads. I imagine part of that's because the collector roads are used more frequently, but to some degree, it would almost seem to me like we might be weighting it too much, where even if you have a really poor local road, a weighting of three on a collector road might tip the balance to a point where, even the way that it's currently been prioritized, most of the 2019, 2020 priorities are all collector roads, unless they've been identified by the district as a priority local road. So I'm just curious, if you can speak to that choice of a factor of three weights?
Sure, yeah, I can, through the mayor. The three to one was actually a recommendation by Tetra Tech. So Tetra Tech does this for allotted municipalities in Canada, and this was their recommendation. Certainly, as Chris mentioned, is they deteriorate faster, and so they need more maintenance. But it's also a safety issue. Generally, collector roads, think of Queensway or Government, generally traffic's a lot faster. And so you have distortions in the pavement that can, especially if you're going faster, that can be a higher safety risk as well, because it can kind of jiggle your car, jiggle the steering. So it's a combination of things, it's Tetra Tech's recommendations, it's safety, and it's also the importance of those routes. They are transit routes, they're school bus routes, they're hot-volume routes. So it might be a little bit arbitrary, but that was their recommendation.
I would also just add that we take this list, and then every year, we come up with our actual work list, and then we put it out to tender. And so we also take into account other factors, like what other sewer water plans we're doing, what are we doing for active transportation, where's the bus route, what are the roads that's on the plan for next year? We get safety complaints from bus drivers that they've got to go very slow so they don't hurt their backs on that particular road, you know, and so that helps bump it off the list as well, as a starting point.
Council Anderson, Council Petten.
During the last development cost charges by law review, there was a system of identifying road networks that was utilized, transportation analysis zones, I think it was. We now have a unique ID list through the chart. Is this a new system for identifying roads, or is it the one that Tetra Tech used back in 2010?
Great question, through the mayor. Maybe Josie can answer that.
I believe it's the...
You're going to speak after you come to microphone? We're standing in one of the microphone.
So we're talking about the ID number just beside the list?
Yes.
Touchdowns on ID number, that doesn't have to do anything with the other system? It's for their paperwork.
That's a Tetra Tech number?
Yeah, it is a Tetra Tech number, yeah.
For the layman and local resident, it may be difficult and confusing to go through these. I guess if I may, Councilor Race, given that this will be an adaptive plan, that's the intention, will we be revisiting this during budget time each year? Would that be an opportunity for discussion on how the plan may be updated, especially in relationship to budgeting?
That is not our intent.
It's not?
Our intent would be that this overall list be, hopefully, accepted today by council, and become the guiding document that we use when we put together our work plans, and that the role of council would be at the, during the budget process, would be to allocate whatever the annual budget would be for that year.
Yeah, to be clear, this is not a budget decision today.
Yes.
We'll vote on the amount that we might allocate to this in the budget process coming up. The purpose of this, from my perspective, is to reinforce your thoughts when you come to that decision, about how much money is justified and what it's based on. So it kind of just, here's you the background for where that budget ask was going to come from. So we're not voting on 1.1 or 1.2 or 1.3 or anything, not today. Thank you. Council Peterson.
Yeah, so, just wondering about, I guess maybe Eric touched on it a little bit, but interaction between stormwater management, paving choices, and the prices we're looking at, have those things been considered as well, or this was really focused just on the roads itself? And actually, along with that, does this include sidewalks and bike paths and so on, or is it really just the road?
Through the mayor, sorry, you're asking about the costs?
Yeah, I'm just sort of wondering what was considered in, you know, the various numbers, and the benefit, the cost benefit and so on. So did we look at, you know, if we spend a little bit more on the roads, it actually saves us some on stormwater management?
Through the mayor, Josie, feel free to jump in too. There were certain considerations in the costs and the types of rehab, based on the infrastructure, for example. If there's a curb and a sidewalk, that's a different rehabilitation strategy, because that provides, that is a constraint in actually what kind of work you can do. So certainly, when they were driving with their fancy truck, they were taking kind of photographs and mapping all that kind of other stuff. It's not a perfect system, but there was considerations, what kind of infrastructure we have, and how to best incorporate it. Again, the best I can say with this plan, it is catered to the District of Squamish as best we can, as best they can.
But this does not include, like, the cost for sidewalk upgrade or anything like that?
That's correct. It takes those considerations as factors that affect the paving, but it's really just the paving.
I'll go to the seat, Eric.
Just for council's benefit, when you see the budget come forward, there is a separate capital line item for active transportation projects that are in the act of transportation plan. So in terms of bike lanes and sidewalks and things like that, that's in the act of transportation plan, and has its own budget line item, separate payments.
So, one more piece of clarification. Certainly, when we're, as Chris mentioned, certainly when we're doing a paving project, we're taking consideration other projects. So often, it makes sense that we do an act of transportation project right beside a paving project, and so we find the synergy of those two projects, or we're building them for cheaper, because we're building them at the same time. So we certainly often combine these different pots of money, buckets of money into one project, and that's how we get the biggest bang for the buck. So we certainly think of, try to think of the whole package as we're doing these projects.
With regards to each of the budget scenarios presented, the total budget's broken out into the capital budget and then the maintenance costs. In each of the scenarios, the maintenance cost is decreased from what it currently is. Is that feasible and realistic? So it's, this is page 20 of the actual report.
Right.
Current funding allocates 200,000 to maintenance costs, and in the staged budget that you're proposing, it decreases to 140,000.
Through the mayor, thanks for the question. So I'm just going to find something that makes sense. I don't have it. Great question. So again, though, all those, that's what I was looking for. As I just, as I mentioned earlier, the picture on the left, so what happens, this is background, as the pavement gets worse, you have to do more maintenance to maintain a road that's in poor condition. The numbers that were provided in the report were provided by Tetra Tech, and that's their kind of collective experience. So they do these studies and reports over municipalities, and so they've provided those numbers as percentages, and that's based on their experience. So, you know, we're using that as a base, it's going to fluctuate, I will see, a little bit, but I would trust those numbers are from a reputable company that has a lot of experience. And, yes, as you spend more maintaining a good pavement network, you spend less on maintenance.
Council Petten.
So this may be a topic for us to take to the council strategic planning, but I think I read in the report that GHG considerations are not part of capital project decision-making, and I'm just wondering if you can explain that. It seemed a bit counterintuitive to me, is GHGs drive climate change, which in theory exacerbates road conditions.
Through the chair, we are not, through the provincial framework around GHG reporting and our obligations under our carbon neutrality that we signed on to as a municipality, most of our capital works are exempt from that accounting. Now, we certainly do, for example, we spoke briefly, and we'll speak again in a couple months about flaring of landfill. We do sometimes get directed to do a capital project in order to reduce our corporate emissions, and we have budget line items for that, but it is not part of our accounting for our corporate GHGs.
Council Anderson.
Yes, just as we are approving a package, so to speak, I wondered if I could return to the Clark Drive example, just for clarity. I'm reading from the 2014 Land Development Agreement with Forks, Kingswood, Scott Crescent, and its sites that are two-site here, resurface pavement retained where necessary to accommodate a 2.1-meter cycling pedestrian lane. During 2014, this item was controversial, because the property owners here, there are six of them, pointed out that the topography is very difficult. The road is, yes, in poor condition, but just to be clear, that there seems to be an assumption that the developers want to pay for those improvements. I just wanted to make sure that I was not unclear previously on making that up. Thank you.
Any further questions from council? There is a staff recommendation, so you'd be prepared to do that. Moved by Council Stoner, seconded by Council Anderson. Is there any discussion? Comment? I will make the comment. I think, for my purposes, the value of this, because these things do sometimes get tweaked over time, there is a little bit of evolving, but I think there's a couple of lessons here, and the first is, you pay now or you pay later, and we have to keep that in mind during the budget process, and it's easy to take money off, some request. The reality is, as the study shows us, we will end up paying back more. And the second is, that the way we approach paving generally in this process is through science, and it's not political decisions to pay one road versus another road, obviously. It's not the kind of thing that council ever kind of gets involved in or shouldn't. It's not like the top of your law school, like I'm assured of that. So it's more to understand the science behind it and where this comes from when we do make budget decisions. Anything further? Council Stoner?
Yeah, I'll just say, as we were speaking about this morning, about the number of master plans that we have, it's super helpful to have these frame marks in place to help prioritize where the work is going, and to see what needs to be done and on what timeframe. So thanks for working in and contributing to it.
So thanks for working in and contributing to it.
Councilor Stone?
I'll just echo that. The data that we've been given is super helpful. It's really comprehensive. And in perfect world, I think all of our reports would be this data-rich and this comprehensive, so it's great work.
I'll call a question. Go ahead.
Well, I just, my guts telling me we're maybe a little low on the funding of this, and we will think about it a bit more in the context of the budget, but it just seems that we're scraping the bottom a little bit much maybe.
We'll have the option. We'll have the option to raise the amount in the budget process, that's always an option. Careful what you wish for. Anything further? Oh, Councilor Herbert, sorry.
Just the quantity and the quality of the data in this is amazing, I think, to spending whatever budget amount does get approved through, gives me confidence that it's spent very wisely. I think the smallest section I noticed was 23 meters or like very, very small pieces and very small elements, and it's very, very impressive and was a huge learning experience. And yeah, that's good.
Anything further? I'll call a question. I'm prepared. I suppose, I don't think there are any amendments. Thank you. Good to meet you.
So I think we have five minutes right before we start the night.
Yes, you probably do. That gives us a chance to get a minute.
We are in recess.
Confused with that.
That's enough. Thank you. And we are back in the committee hall meeting. We are on item three sub-three, Community Enhancement Grant Program 2019. I'll maybe turn it over to staff to start with, and they can introduce this before we, as council, get into dealing with this. Ms. Matthews?
Thank you, Acting Mayor, Grace. We are, we would like to do a very brief overview on community enhancement grants just for the incoming councilors and for our public, so that they understand a bit more too, why it's, why you have to make some of the tough decisions you make. So we will just start out, just to give you a rough idea of what we're going to do over the next two hours, we would like to give you a brief overview, some of the authorities and responsibilities that come with something like, doing something like this, financially determining grants, and the policies that we have in place to help guide or make sure that we are staying within our legal frameworks. We are also going to just take this opportunity to revisit a couple areas in the policy. We adopted this policy two years ago. We've now had a full cycle to be able to see how it's working, and there are a couple areas that we probably need to just revisit with this council, ground-truth them and decide if we need to make some policy amendments. Then we're going to actually get into the really hard work, where you roll up your sleeves and you actually have to consider these applications. I don't envy you that. After that, we're just going to cycle back. There may be some of the things out of this that ask, you'd like to see some of those applicants in a delegated way in another meeting. And we'd also just like to touch base with you about some, whether the contingency that you generally carry is enough. So we'll circle around, try and cover all of those things in the next two hours. And I probably should have started, I'm sorry, I kind of jumped in right ahead. I'm Christine Matthews, I'm the Chief Financial Officer, I forgot that part. Linda Klassen is our Manager of Financial Operations. She's here because she's going to bring you up to speed a little bit on some of the tax exemption items that came across our table with the previous council. And so she's just going to update you on some of that so that you understand the context of one of the applications here today that's in the grant process. And Lily Marie Peterson is our Administrative Assistant in the Finance Department, and Lily takes care of all of our community enhancement grant application processing. So she's going to walk you through the application process. So just to let you know what your jurisdictions and authorities are, the community charter is fairly open on this and basically gives you fairly broad jurisdiction to deliver services within your jurisdiction and your boundaries. So for the most part, you are able to provide grants to agencies. So the only real legal restrictions you fall under is that you are prohibited from assisting any business, and that includes granting benefits or any types of advantage. And any expenditure that you do make has to be within the financial plan. So those are kind of the two key legal things. We also have a council policy that helps guide how and when we might give community enhancement grants and procedures around how that happens. And we'll go into that a little bit more as we move on. So I think some of the things that I want to talk to this council about is, we haven't really had an opportunity to do a financial orientation yet, but one of the key things that comes with a municipality and as council is this awesome power of taxation, and it is a pretty big responsibility. And essentially, as you go through processes like this and we come to the budget, it's going to be an area where you're going to have to really take that quite seriously, obviously. You're impacting every single property owner in the community. And essentially with community enhancement grants, I guess you just want to be careful that you're not really choosing everybody's charitable donations, really. You know, you really want to think about these community enhancement grants in terms of how they maybe provide a broader community purpose, and that you want to make sure they're fitting your strategic priorities and that they are part of your jurisdiction, municipal jurisdiction, to enhance and make sure that you have a livable community. So that can be fairly broad, but it's important that you kind of think about those principles as you're going through, because I can assure you, as you go through these lists, there is no end of really worthy and exciting groups out there who are doing great work in the communities and across British Columbia. And it's sometimes hard to sift through all that and kind of find out, well, where should we be propping those organizations up and making sure that our tax dollars from property taxation is going to the right purpose? The other thing as you go through this is that we are the stewards of that public purse. So once you bring in that taxation money, you want to make sure it's being used in a responsible manner. We have a lot of laws around how we manage and do business in order to ensure that the public purse is protected and that people have an ample opportunity to weigh in and ensure that their tax dollars are being used in a proper and meaningful way. So some of the aspects in our own policy that you'll see is where we try and ensure that the groups that we provide money to are financially sustainable, so that when we give them funds, we know that those funds will be used and managed in a responsible way, and that they'll actually be used for the purposes in which we intended them to be used for. So we do have some responsibility on that end as well. Anytime we run into granting programs with any other higher agency, we are certainly held to those standards. If we apply for grants with the province, we're required to keep good record-keeping. We are required to report back on them and submit claims. We are required to meet their deadlines, that type of thing. And really, we should be trickling down those types of concepts and thought processes to our own granting programs. Having said all that, there's lots of great reasons why we do provide grants. It's a really often very cost-effective way of delivering our strategic priorities from a community-wide basis. Often the nonprofits have more expertise in certain areas than we have, and they are the better people to provide those services that maybe we're committed to or be part of our strategic priorities, but maybe they're better suited to do them. It allows us to leverage and collaborate, so we can leverage funding and collaborate with multiple agencies. So often those nonprofits bring together a lot of different funding agencies, including the province, ourselves, et cetera, and we're able to leverage and bring broader services and more capacity to the community. And they can also mitigate, proactively mitigate costs for the community. So particularly, we run into some of those things with social programming, where if we can get ahead of it with a nonprofit doing some proactive work, it can save money down the line for other costs that may start to impact a community on a broader basis. So again, there's lots of great reasons to give grants, and I think if you keep some of those guiding principles in mind, it'll help you sift through which grants make the most sense. So I do want to just walk you through the policy. I suspect you're all pretty conscientious.
Sure.
I'm going to interrupt you, Ms. Matthews, if I may. If you go back a slide, can you provide a couple of examples of those? I'm thinking, for instance, the Arts Council to further the arts agenda.
Put me on the spot. Maybe you'd like to.
There's one for you. Okay.
Sorry, off the top of my head. Well, I mean, I think, to take it off a social aspect and specifically around leveraging, I think our Sorka and our Trails groups are prime examples of where we're able to leverage some of the funding and the great work that they do out of what I consider a fairly economical cost to the community to bring in that kind of economic driver. So that's maybe a good example. We also work with the Helping Hands who do a lot of food bank work, and we deal with Cedar Sky, and there's a number of agencies, and as you go through, I think you'll probably already know how much they commit to the, to the community overall, so.
Thank you. That wasn't a test.
Not like one. I'm day back from Halloween. That's like a break.
It's you.
Day two, that's right. So anyway, I did want to just quickly walk through some of the key areas of the policy. I'm sure you're all very diligent and you've probably gone through it already, but I just want to highlight a couple key areas of the policy. So under the definitions, I want to bring your attention to community event. And the reason I do that, we've often struggled sometimes with funding events around the community, and we had tried when we did this policy to ensure that those events were truly of a community nature and not necessarily a profit-oriented endeavor. And so we really are looking for events where if, even if they are maybe charging a small fee, those fees in some way go back to the greater good of the community. So if we are looking at sponsoring events, or I shouldn't say sponsoring events, we try not to do that, but if we are looking at providing space for events, then we are looking at whether the gate fee is something that gets then repurposed back into the community, if there is a gate fee, or it's free and open to the entire community. So good examples of this would be when we do our candidate day celebrations and things like that, where it's really, truly a full community event, and there's no fees, that might be something we'd consider providing spaces for or in-kind services towards. Whereas perhaps an organization, trying to think of, and I don't want to, I don't want to actually use an actual one because I don't, I want to be careful, but if you had some kind of special music fest or something, and you couldn't see, you wouldn't necessarily give them free spaces, even if it was an off-profit, if those revenues weren't necessarily tangibly coming back and being used for a greater purpose within the municipality. So that's just, I'm bringing that one up because we do sometimes get requests from various events to have free spaces and things like that. The other, some of the key goal, or principles on 1.2 of the policy, again, this, you'll notice that some of these tend to favor some of the topics I talked about before in terms of principles of being the holders of the public purse and taxation pieces. Basically, ideally, you would like it to support strategic goals of the council and the community. We want to support financially viable nonprofit or charitable organizations. We want to ensure there is sufficient benefit to the greater and wider population and residents of the district, and we are looking for cost sharing and effectiveness in those dollars, so leveraging them out there to make a bigger, gain more capacity. In the, under the allocation of funds, I'm just going to highlight this a little bit because we're going to circle back on this particular area in a few minutes as one of the areas that may not be working very well for us right now and might need a little bit of a tweak in this policy. Currently, council may allocate up to 1% of last year's taxation budget towards community grants. At this time, this actually says that all of the grants, so regardless of whether it's funded by taxation, would be coming from that pot. So we'll circle back and talk about that a bit more because so far, we're not necessarily meeting that criteria. So we want to talk about whether we'd like to tweak this policy item, if it's not servicing, serving council the way council wants to approach this program. I did kind of highlight the concept under council is not obligated, item five, to renew any grant. The reason I do that is, again, as councilors, I think you want to be very cautious about becoming a major or sole funder that manages to keep an organization going, because then it really is, you're really buoying their operational activities on an ongoing basis. So again, we want these groups to fundamentally be financially sustainable, so that if in a future year, you decide that they're now, you know, ideally, they're running smoothly, and ideally, we maybe aren't continuing to supplement them all the time. Like again, this comes back to that concept of trying to make sure they're financially sustainable on their own. So that's just another concept I'll pull out. And then council may consider multi-year grants. This is another one we'll circle back on because we do have a couple, and we have good reasons for having them. But right now, it says that multi-year grants in total may not exceed 30% of the 1% taxation. And we probably need to either increase that or remove that clause or that restriction because we are running into that barrier right now. So that'll be something we, in our revisiting, we ask you more about. I think that's, the only other thing we're going to talk a little bit about, I'm just going to draw your attention to number, or item F of 1.3. Council may provide funding outside the annual intake process in extraordinary circumstances. The reason I come to this is, you will start to learn that we do get delegations and requests for grants through the year. What we want to caution against is that we do make these grant applications, so we do make these applicants go through a process. As you can see, they're expected to do applications for this process, meet this deadline, and get in here, and then be prioritized. We have 41 applications here that need to be prioritized, have decided how they fit within this envelope. What we caution you about is, through the year, having other groups come to you, and it'll seem like a really good idea at the time, but what we want to make sure is that you're, one, making them go through the same processes that others have had to go through to get this grant, that you're considering the prioritization of those items against these, the same applications, what these applications had to go through. There are situations where they absolutely might come in late because there wasn't unforeseen, there was maybe no way they could have foreseen that they would need this back at the granting program, but we kind of, this clause or this area of the policy is really trying to impress upon us to treat all applicants fairly and to make them undergo the same tests that we would have put other applicants who followed the processes and made it on the deadlines on time follow. Okay? With, sorry, you're still going, I'm still going through the policy there, yeah. So 1.7, in-kind grants, just very briefly touch on in-kind grants. This is when we provide spaces and sometimes staff services and other costs through, in-kind support instead of direct cash. I just draw your attention to this because often there is this concept that that isn't a cost to the municipality. But anytime we're taking our productive resources and the resources that we would use for other operational activities, there is still a cost to us, and we do still show that cost within our grant program and supplement back. So when we give away recreation spaces, our facilities that we would normally rent out, there is an inherent cost to that because we can't now rent it out to someone else for the cash that we would normally bring in for that facility. So it does, can impact the operational budgets of, say, Recreation, who relies on some of that revenue in their budgets to manage their operations. So just to, again, a concept to keep in mind, because sometimes it's very easy to go, oh, well, we have that, we can provide that over to a granting program, it does come at a cost to us. It comes to a cost to us, either in productivity or lost revenue. So that's, just keep that in mind as you go through the in-kind grants as well. 2.1 eligibility, again, just highlighted a couple areas under here. Not eligible if you are located or not operating within the district boundaries. So that has come up in the past, we have sometimes had applicants from outside Squamish. We don't, obviously, not eligible. We don't, obviously, not eligible if you're a business or commercial enterprise because of the legislative requirements. Applicants seeking cash sponsorship for events. So we might donate a field to an event, but generally, we don't provide sponsorship. And applications for projects that are the responsibility of other levels of government. And again, this comes down to some of the community charter concepts around jurisdiction. So if this is something that should be handled by a higher level of government, will really only come to the table if, again, we can leverage something that also has a community benefit within our own jurisdictions. And I think finally, just draw your attention to 2.2, the evaluation criterias, because I think that'll help guide you as you go through with some of the things when you're looking at the applications. You obviously want to refer back to the principles of 1.2. We truly want to try and complement our own services and strategic priorities. We address a community need that has a substantial positive impact on the community. We expect extensive benefits to the local residents and the applicant has a track record of community service and volunteerism in the area, so they have a proven track record is usually a good standard. Financial viability of the applicant and the project, so we really don't want to hand over money and then have a project not get to fruition because the society or group isn't financially sustainable and maybe goes belly up and the project doesn't get completed. And we do actually look at whether they're receiving other benefits from us in the form of permissive tax exemptions. And I think with that, we will just circle back on the three areas that I wanted to talk to you about with this policy, to see if you would want any policy amendments going forward for the following items. So under 1.3, the 1% of the prior year's budgeted general tax revenue is the cap for grants right now. But it says funding sources may vary. So the initial intent of this was that regardless of whether it was coming from other funding sources other than property taxation, we would stay within a 1% cap for expenditures for this community grants. Over the last couple of years, we've noticed that if we are using a reserve or we have implemented a community amenity contribution, we're adding that into the grant program in excess of this 1% cap. So I guess the question to council is, this may be an area that you want to review and change and just have it be a 1% impact on taxation. And if you have other funding sources that you're, you know, that you think are applicable, that you may want to take that final line out, funding sources may vary, we may want to strike that out. So we'd be looking for direction from council if they would like to do that. We can follow up and do that at the end of the meeting because I think when Lilly goes through some of the parameters or some of the information around where we're at right now, it might guide whether or not you really want to stick with this or not. But that's one of the amendments that we're suggesting you may need to make to this policy to stay on the right side of this policy as you move forward. The other one would be 1.3B, which is the multi...
C?
C, yes, thank you. Sorry, I put the wrong one on the slide there. Council may consider multi-year grants not to exceed three years in duration in order for the applicant to secure matching multi-year funding from other organizations. And then it says, it goes on to say, multi-year grants in total may not exceed 30% of the amount determined in 1.3A for any year. So that's 1.3A being the 1%. The intent of this clause was to allow you to potentially provide a grantor money. And the thought process at the time was that anyone where we could leverage granting, so if we knew the provincial government was maybe going to come and it was going to be a multi-year program, we didn't want the funder to not be able to move forward and do something bigger because they couldn't rely on us providing funding for one or two years. So that was why it was originally put in there. We have started to also apply the multi-year concept to our Arts Council and our Sorka and Trail groups because they were trying to do some multi-year work and they needed some assurance that they could rely on some funding on an ongoing basis. So the other issue here is the 30%. And the reason we were looking at the 30% is we didn't want to get so many multi-year grants that we actually eliminated the ability to provide a grant to any new applicants the year after. So that was the intent of this policy. But again, when Lilly goes through her outline of where we're at right now, you'll see that we're exceeding this 30% target now with our multi-year grants. And the specific reasoning for why we have that multi-year grant may or may not still fit this council's intentions and needs for this program. So again, this may be an area where we need to look at to stay on the right side of our own policy and ensure that the policy is really doing what we need it to do. And finally, I think under 1.4, we have several situations, or we have put in a situation where we require the grantors to come back to us before they get money for maybe the next year by April of the following year. So say if we grant for 2019, in April of 2020, they would have to provide us a financial accounting of how they use the funds. And what we have done is in our application process, where they do the budget, we ask them to go back and fill in what they actually spent and send it back into us. There's two things, probably about two things here that I want to follow up with you on. Right now, that documentation doesn't require any certification or any attesting to the fact that those numbers or amounts are correct. We are getting some less than ideal financial information back from some of these user groups that don't necessarily assure us that they have used the funds the way we expect them to or that they are managing and have good, solid records and accounting information. So we would like to impress on them that they need to use our form and we would like to add a certification process to that where they're at least attesting to that and signing off that they are, it's true and correct. We're not sure how much further council would want us to extend that kind of stewardship. The other question is, does council want us to come back in April and provide any support or pull that into the Finance and Audit Committee or something along that line so that you actually get to see that the funds were handled properly? Or do you just want staff to continue to follow up on that process? So those are kind of the three things we'd like to revisit with you on a policy basis. We can either do that now or we can circle back at the end, look to the chair.
Yeah, I, my thought is to do it at the end. Let's kind of see where we get through, going through this process. There's a couple of possibilities there. One is that you only come back just with ones that are not complying as opposed to looking at all of them, or you just do it yourself. I think if there is non-compliance, it's something that should be taken into consideration at least in the following set of grants if they apply again, but that's just my view. But I think we'll have a better idea once we've kind of gone through this, these ones. And in any of these, staff is free to make comments that they're not in compliance with the previous year and just to assist us with the decision. The only question I had was with respect to the budget cap, which I know isn't a cap, but it's a goal, call it that, because we exceeded it last year in our wisdom. So, but looking at the report, based on 2018 budgeted general taxation, the total community enhancement grant program for 2019 may extend up to 276,797 and cumulative multi-year grants may not exceed 83039. So the 83039, I take it, is included in the 276 number? Part of that number?
Yes.
And some of that has already been committed in prior years, I think with Sorka, the Arts Council and that little one for the Ocean Watch Group. So do we have a number out of 276, what is still discretionary?
Yes.
What is still available?
And Lilly will go through that next. So we'll toss it over and give you all the financial implications of where you're at now, what you did last year shortly.
Okay. So before we move on then, council got any questions about what we heard?
Well, I just, you know, I did have a different perspective on how to approach some of these things possibly and then also some broader thoughts I had after reading through, which I don't know if we want to take to the end or they may, we talked about them first, impact how we consider the individual ones.
Yeah, I think the way, this is from a different council, of course, and it's policy, not bylaws, so we can change policy, it's a guide. My view of that is when we get to a particular grant, there can be a policy statement, we can choose then to either follow it or not. And we can just deal with it on an individual basis. At the end of the process, we can decide, I think, if we want to start amending the policy and go off in another direction. But rather than try and change the policy before we've actually kind of come to that point, it might be easier to get to the point. Would that work? Anybody else? In our...
In the Schedule A under ineligible projects, there's nothing there, it comes up for me with one application, but maybe for others too that I might have missed. My question is, here it says ineligible operating expenses needed to sustain basic ongoing operations. I wondered if that might include paid staff for fundraising. So fundraising as an activity under operations, how would that be considered?
So through the chair, the intent of this ineligibility was really to just make sure that it didn't make them financially unsound if we stopped providing them funding. So it's not to say that we wouldn't fund some operational project or some operational aspect of their business, but it's really trying to make that distinction that we don't want to become their only revenue source or really a majority of the revenue source so that they can't truly operate unless we continue to fund them. That's really the intent of that clause.
Thank you.
My question's around, was it section 1.3F, which is the funding outside the annual intake for extraordinary circumstances? And item one there says, total community grant funding does not exceed the amount determined in 1.3. That would imply that there's a certain amount of holdback to allow for this?
Yeah.
And is that going to be addressed in the next, am I going and reading ahead into the...
No, but it's a good, it's a good pickup because what you're going to find out is we have 41 applications and they're far exceeding 1% already. And in the past, if we were to take out that one line that says funding from sources may vary, in general, we probably have met that in terms of a 1% tax hit. So that's one of the reasons we're suggesting you might want to take that out. Secondly, we do have the contingency funding and this is one of the areas where council may from time to time step out of the policy and use their general contingency. And we'll circle back on you to make sure. In the past, we have talked about whether you actually want to leave a contingency through this process as well that allows for some of those other granters to come along. In the past, this council has determined, or the previous council had decided, no, they were okay to just use their general contingencies if something came up. And again, we really, we encourage you to try to be as disciplined as possible and to discipline your community as much as possible to meet the grant deadlines and to do what they need to do at the right time. So in theory, it should really only be coming up in extraordinary circumstances where they have not foreseen or had the opportunity or ability to foresee an opportunity at the time of grant application.
And that decision won't be today. That's a budget decision, I would think, whether we set up a separate contingency.
It does help guide us though as we move into this.
As a boss?
Because we can either put the contingency as part of the grant and aid program right now, which has to be decided by December 31st anyway, according to this policy, or we can choose to increase the contingency through the budget process. That's another option.
But the amount still shouldn't exceed the 1%.
Well, that's the theory.
The intent is that it not exceed the 1%.
Okay, yeah, I was trying to understand where our goalposts are as we have to go through and make the...
This becomes much more meaningful when you go through the budget process and you see the effect of spending money decisions, so, and the impact on taxation that the entire community has to bear.
And, actually, I'll leave it there, sir. Thank you.
Go ahead.
So just, I'll just finish off and then we'll hand it over to Lilly. Final thoughts here, just, you got a tough job ahead. We have all bought. They're all great initiatives. That's the thing you're going to find as you read through them, you're going to see they're all really good viable initiatives. You know, there's no one here that you're going to go, oh, no, we don't want to fund those people. It's going to be a tough, tough haul. The Ask Park exceeds past years. And the other trick here is that normally, you would have at least had an opportunity to see the budget by now because normally, we would do our workshops in December, but because we're in a transitional year with council, we're really, you haven't had an opportunity to see some of the other constraints and budget constraints. So to Council Race's point, we're acting there, sorry. That is something to keep in mind because it is always a tough slog every year to try and get your budget into an affordable level of tax increase. So, and this is just one more thing that pressures that if you exceed. So we'll talk to you about some of the numbers next so that you have a rough idea of how this might or might not impact budget depending on what levels you choose and carry on from there. So over to Lilly.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. My name's Lilly, I'm the clerk for the Finance Department. I'll be presenting a PowerPoint regarding all the numbers. So this is going to be, provide you a summary of the program and a brief discussion of the current applications as well. And we're here to answer any questions that you might have to help review this year's applications. Okay, so firstly, the process is guided under the community enhancement grant policy and it is the document that also outlines the eligibility of the applicants. That's proceeding as we're through. The current policy requires that all applicants submit their application by October 1st each year in order to be considered. Council must review all applications in public session and determine the funding of each request before December 31st this year. So with that, we ask council review the information today provided by the applicants and if needed, council may wish to invite any applicants as a delegation before final decisions are made, which is really important. So any applicant, any application that you might feel you do need the organization to come in and speak, you can. And I booked December 11th. Should that be the case, if you would like anyone to come back?
And I just want to clarify again, December 31st is a policy choice, so there's no legislative requirement for you to be ready by December 31st, but that is a policy item within our own policy because a lot of the granting agencies need some certainty too before they start up their fiscal years.
Okay, so with the 2019 application review, we've had 41 applications received. The total amount of the new applications for next year is $427,545. All the applications were reviewed for completeness and any missing application or supporting documentation was requested. So it was good this year that they are actually all complete. In addition, Schedule B of the policy was completed as well, that you'll find in your package and on front of every application to help you in your review process. So just to interject, the amount that I just gave before, the $427,000, is actually the new applications. That doesn't actually include the multi-year, the existing applications for multi-year grants, which will be on top of that as well. So the amount that you end up accepting today, we'll have to add on the multi-year grants on top of that. Okay, so I've prepared a summary of the applications in alphabetical order that you would have in your package as well for more specific information. If you, if you would like, last year, you did go through the application process in groups, like in-kind and cash as well. If you would like to do that, I have printed out some other extra tables which actually puts them in, in grouping for in-kind or cash. But if you'd like to use the one that you've already got, we can just go through one, two in alphabetical order.
Yeah, interesting point because I've been kind of tossing in my mind around how we might proceed with this. Thinking of previous years and comments from council in previous years, in some years, we've looked first at the grants that we favored previous year as a starting point and then look at ones that are new this year or were not funded last year after that. So we might consider doing that. We have often... We have often, if we have a bias at all, it is towards ones we've supported in the past, just because we know them, understand what it's going for. Not to say you have to meet the same level this year with a large amount over our theoretical cap, it's certainly open to council to go with one that we favored last year, but not to the same amount. We have that option. But that's one way of approaching it, and then consider the new ones, which we may want to look at in a little bit more depth, because they are new. And that's one approach, and the other thing is, just as a matter of how we're going to vote on them, my thought is to take straw votes on each line item as we get to them, as opposed to a specific resolution, and then, at some point, we'll have a resolution for collective seriousness. Does staff have a comment on that one or the other?
I'll look to his dicker on that, because I know this might be good, that's normally what we do, we kind of go through the block with you, and we have a spreadsheet in the background, so that we can keep track of what you're kind of saying yes or no to, and then we can help, Sarah.
It also makes us easier to go back and change something if we get to some point where we're not quite in a final decision.
Well, I think you answered my question, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, the first pass would be just seeing where everyone's at, kind of thing, and then we may change your minds on...
I think inevitably, yeah.
It's a pretty big ask this year, you're definitely going to be a bit of a process, I think.
And do you have the amounts of the existing three-year grants that would come due this year?
We are...
You have that?
Lilly's already anticipated all of your questions.
So, we'll just go through this current year first, just to give you some background information. Under the, as mentioned, under the policy, up to 1% of the prior year, which is this year's budget of general taxation, might be set aside specifically for the general enhancement, for the General Community Enhancement Grant Program, but funding sources may vary. So, the policy cap this year was $260,326, but all up so far, a total of $288,986 has been granted for the program. So that includes all the applications that came before council in, like this time last year in 2017, as well as groups who have also appealed outside of that period to council. The alternate funding came from different, various sources, in this case, community and many contributions were $30,000. $11,000 of that came from the 2017 contingency fund, and then we also had a donation from the Whistler Blackcomb Foundation for $15,000. The result...
That's a flow-through though, isn't it?
Yeah. So, that was through the BMX program, so most likely, usually come every year. The result was a net grant impact of $242,986 from general revenues. Okay, so going to the next year, based on the 2018 budget of general taxation, the Community Enhancement Grant Program for 2019 may extend up to $276,797. Currently, 2019, we have received, I should also write, cumulative multi-grants may not exceed $83,39. For 2019, we've received two applications for multi-year grants, one of these being Helping Hands, for an equal amount in both years, and for 2019, 2020, they'll request the same amount. Squam mentioned, has asked for $11,700, this is for 2019, but the second year, they only need $5,100 for 2020.
Sorry to interrupt, so, going back up to the current multi-year grant totals, $122,750, is that the amount that is payable this year, or is that the total of the three years?
That will, so that will need to be paid in 2019.
So that's this year's portion of it?
Yeah. So, the extra multi-years will be out until then. They have three grants, so that $1, $22,750, all of those grants that are included in that will also actually also be paid 2020, I believe.
Yeah.
Except for...
Because they only started that program last year.
Yeah.
So, 18, 19, 20.
So, I see a problem with the 30% amount. Was the suggestion to modify that percentage, or just leave it to our, leave it to council's discretion for that percentage, what that percentage ends up being?
Through Acting Mayor Ray's, the question was actually one or the other. So we can either remove that requirement altogether, or we can maybe increase it to 50% or something, still, to allow for that principle, that you don't want to chew up all of your grant space with multi-years.
And at minimum, it should match what we've already decided they were running at, or what was already decided before us that we're running at.
We're committed to those.
Yeah, so then that 30% should be amended to at least reflect the $122 number.
Through Mayor, Acting Mayor Ray's, and two Acting Mayor Ray'ses, it's way easier to call you Counsel Ray, or Chair. Through the Chair. Regarding the Chair's comments earlier, he's absolutely correct, though, this is a council policy. At any time, council can make a decision to step outside their policy. We put these guidelines in place, or councils put this guideline in places to ideally guide the community, let them know what decisions are going to be based on, and ideally, you stick to them, because it's usually grounded on some sound principles. But if you were just having a one-year blip on this, and it was in extenuating circumstances, you wouldn't necessarily need to amend your policy. What we're finding, though, is over the two years that this policy's been in place, those are the three areas where we think the policy is not necessarily in line with what councils are deciding to do, and that's why we're bringing those three items back to you, is you might want to reconsider whether that's really serving your intent.
The rationale before that, with just having one-year grants, was you, following the general theory that you don't want to fetter future councils. And you can imagine how you'd feel sitting here if the previous council had basically tied up your entire grant opportunity with multi-year grants, and now we're the decision shortly increasing taxation. So, that's why you have to temper that. We balanced that up finally, because a couple of these organizations have projects that needed longer commitments, and so, that was the discussion, but there's obviously a balance point in there. So, that's what it is right now, I think we can just, we have two additional requests for multi-year grants, and we can consider those, and accept them or not, or just grant them for one year, and we would have that option as well. I'm sure they wouldn't turn the money down, but maybe a bit more difficult for the commitments they would want to make with it. So, is that...
Yes, so, should we actually, should the council decide to grant the current multi-year grant request, that would be $159,450, 2019 worth of multi-year grants.
Which is somewhere around half of...
I did the 50% number, and it would fit just.
So, just summarizing the financial impact, so new requests for $27,545, previously committed, which is our multi-year grants, amount of $122,750. The total net impact, which includes current requests plus committed grants already, is a total of $550,295. Current alternate funding sources have come to $30,000 of that, which gives a net tax impact, 277,309, which would, this equates to a potential of 1.02% increase of taxation revenue for 2019 in order to cover the grant program, should all grants actually be approved today.
Just so council understands, that $30,000 doesn't come to us from taxation, it comes from amenity paid by one of the IPPs up in Mount Quail, and we have, it's actually, I think, a bit more than that, but we've taken $30,000 out for the last few years and applied it to the Sorka Trail Building grant. So, it would be wrapped into part of that three-year grant, because last year, we gave Sorka the three-year commitment, that would be $30,000, which would be, that would be part of the non-taxation, or to be part of the grant line.
Just a question on the multi-year grants, are they, do they have the same financial and reporting requirements, so they're reporting on an annual basis still?
So, moving on to the applications, several applications will benefit from staff feedback during council's review. These applications are from Cedar Sky Community Services, particularly for their taxation application, because they do have two applications in. Quest University for their 3D modeling program, and from the Trail Society as well. At their turn of review, we welcome council to request staff to offer additional information. However, at the moment, when it comes to Cedar Sky Community Services, we have Linda here, who did take care of the PTE, just to speak on that application, to give you some additional information.
All right. Back in October, Cedar Sky Community Services applied for a permissive tax exemption, and we provided them with a permissive tax exemption for their office space and commercial space they have. However, they also own 17 rental units, and for those rental units, we did not provide a permissive tax exemption. Those rental units are considered low to moderate rental housing. Inside, also within the Center Point building, there is another 15 units that are owned by the, they're provincially owned, decent housing owns those, and those are what we would consider low-income housing, because they're based on the hill rates, housing income rates, and that's how the rental is determined. So, on the basis of that, that we have not provided permissive tax exemption to any rentals in the community, and we didn't want to set a precedent and have not a clear definition on affordable housing or policy, we did not provide the permissive tax exemption to the Cedar Sky Community Services for their 15 units of low-to-moderate income housing.
Yeah, and I think one of the key issues that we thought about when we went through the permissive tax exemption piece, was that we are working on housing policies right now with Nicola, and we didn't, we didn't front of that with maybe a PTE or grant and aid decision, because we do actually have several other properties around the community who are providing this low-to-moderate income rental stock, and we are not currently providing them PTEs or grants of any form, they are funding and managing their own operations. So, we were a little bit concerned about setting a precedent in this before we had addressed our own housing policies as to how we would step forward and potentially look at funding low-to-moderate income. The other thing, too, is we also don't want to trip into provincial jurisdiction. Any housing that is managed and provided hill rates, et cetera, through the province does so to already supplement and provide affordable housing, because it is in their jurisdictional purview to do that. So, we don't necessarily want to step in and double-aid those types of units, they're already being funded and managed through the provincial programming. So, because of all of those factors, at the time of permissive tax exemption, your preceding council determined that that was a fair assessment that staff made, and they did not grant permissive tax exemptions. That has, since we have seen an application come in from Cedar Sky through the Grant and Aid Program to essentially cover those taxes through a different process, we would just caution you that that's not really the intent, if they don't really meet our permissive tax exemption policies, that probably not a great idea to start using your community enhancement grants to supplement them instead. We probably should have made that decision on the permissive tax exemption point.
So, I take it these, permissive tax exemption is not for the new Center Point residences? So, it's residences that have existed for a while, and we haven't had this request before, is there a sudden emergency that we're aware of, or this is more based, we'll ask and see what happens, or...
This is actually on the Center Point property that is a new property, and we originally, last year, would have funded the entire project or space, because at the time, it was not developed yet, and we had no way of stratifying or determining how that building would be broken down. We knew that it was coming as a nonprofit purpose, so we ended up providing them a permissive tax exemption on the entire area. But now that we have the full stratification and are able to actually distinguish the nonprofit operating area versus their rental units, that's brought the issue into light for 2019.
Yeah, the building just opened last year, so this is the first year we really had to consider that, because historically, that property was owned by the United Church, and there was either four or five separate titles that made up that block. One of them had the church on it, and that one, by legislation, was exempt. And then the United Church used to ask for an exemption for the other three lots that were used for the parking lot and play area and stuff like that, and we historically have granted those. So now that the two operations are on the same site, it's introduced some new uses, which is residential, which wasn't there before, and that's what's created the situation. So, Lilly, you had a suggestion about going through the grant and aid, not the grant and aid, the in-kind first?
Oh, yeah.
Do you want to address the other two special...
Oh, I beg your pardon, you're halfway through that list.
No, it might be more beneficial for you, like, when those come up, because when they're in front of you, then we can sort of just go through what, because it might be a bit, you don't have it in front of you, what's bearing to it as well. So, yeah, we'll wrap up after we have all this. So, do you want sheets that maybe have the grant and aid, the in-kind first?
I think that one.
Are you good with those?
Well, it's separated, it's a separate column.
Yeah, so that one that you have there is from 1 to 41 in alphabetical order only. If you prefer, do it in-kind first, and then in-kind cash, and then cash, I do have a table that's broken up like that, and otherwise, you can just go through.
Counsel, any thoughts on that? Want to do it?
Maybe go in-kind, in-kind cash, and cash.
Okay, let's do it that way. In-kind, in-kind cash, and cash.
Okay, so you would like this?
Are the, are the numbers...
They will keep the numbers.
Thank you, my notes are here, I was like, huh.
Yeah, I get, keep your numbers. So...
Well, actually, it's not bad, the 2, 5, and so forth are still the same?
Yeah, no, that's good.
Yeah.
We're looking a lost amount.
So, just a direction on delegations, just to confirm again, please keep in mind that if you feel your decision will benefit from more information, particularly from the organization themselves, you can ask for a representative to come back as a delegation.
Yeah, I'm hoping we'll go through this and get as far as we can without delegations, and we'll highlight in that process who you might want to hear from, or something further, if anybody.
So, with the contingency, there's been $40,120 this year worth of grants issued from the contingency. So, council's general contingency is $50,000, so therefore, we ask if council would like to assign any additional contingency for any late-waited applications in 2019, if they would like to.
But we can come back to this after we're also winding up with that.
Yeah.
Let's just come back to this.
My preference is not to make the community think that it's possible to do that, so, bury it in another number, put it in the council contingency, and if you want to increase that, that's fine, but not have one for late applications, because that just opens the door to late applications.
Why don't you just switch over to the... So, get to the applications. Has it gone to the other, because it's split screen, I can't see. Let's go on that second door screen. So, can you... Okay, so you can pass to four review, if you have any questions, please.
Okay, so, I'll leave it. So, we'll start off, number three is the B.C. Whippet Racing Club, request of $51,98 Last year, they requested and received thirty-seven eighty. Does anybody have, and that's the rental from Friends of the Field, they have an event every year for two days.
Two comments on that one. The one, it's not very clear to me how this is, in context to everything else, how this rises to the top of that small amount of money we have. I had some friends who ran a greyhound rescue and from what I know, haven't necessarily heard great things about greyhound and whippet racing. I'm sure there are good owners and, but I guess before, feeling comfortable with this sort of thing, I would prefer to hear a little bit more about how this might benefit the community and, you know, from a third party, about the humane treatment of animals, that kind of thing. The other aspect, and it cuts across all of the in-kind, the question I was asking myself was, you know, it seems like there's a lot of them from a lot of not-for-profit groups in our community. And that made me wonder, is there something wrong with our fees and services or fees and charges by law? Are those rates not correct? And should we be dealing with a lot of these through the fees and services by law or fees and charges by law? Or are the community expectations about when we offer waived service fees, are those out of line? And I guess I have some inclination, and maybe the better understanding will change, but just to say, for a lot of these, one, fees waived, let's deal with that in the fees and charges by law as opposed to grants.
Fees and charges by law has a much broader application. So I think you risk throwing the baby over the bathwater to do something like that. These are the exceptions. If you go back and change the bylaw, you're still at some point going to have to make the decision what qualifies and what doesn't for a waiver of some sort.
I guess, yeah, it just seemed to me that there's, and maybe I'm wrong, but there seem to be a whole lot of exceptions. So I'm wondering if maybe there's some room to improve that by law.
Can I ask a clarifying question and show my lack of knowledge of the fees and bylaws, so the bylaw fee? Is there a nonprofit rate included in the?
Currently, there is not. There is some opportunity, I think, for Mr. Hoskins to provide some opportunities. But generally, no, we don't have a secondary rate for nonprofits right now within that fees by law.
Anybody else?
On this particular application, the increase in the ask, is that coming, it seems to be that the old, what they're asking for is used to the, is that ties back into the fees charged? That increase is just based on the same area that they've used previously, but the rates didn't change?
A lot of, sorry, do the demand. A lot of these are previous in-kind requests that have come back and they're going to be, some of them are going to be quite larger. And that's actually because of our fees and charges have gone up since last year.
Okay, it wasn't?
Generally, all the in-kind applications will have, because they're using, a lot of them will be using district property. They will come with an actual quote, a current quote from recreation, so it reflects that quote exactly.
Okay, I just wasn't sure what had changed, was the?
Our bylaw.
Yeah, fees have gone up, yeah.
Yeah, and in some cases, it would be distorted or bent, though, hypothetically. But there wasn't a clear way to distinguish between the two.
That's true.
Any other thoughts on the first one? We have supported this historically since I've been on council. I know it would be a shock to them to not support it. So I will suggest we support it to last year's number. Hands in paper. Hands opposed? Another suggestion?
Sorry, I'm going to, opposing that as far as the, I don't know what that does to their operations, that make the whole event viable to that? That amount?
Oh, they have to come up with some other services.
In their contingency, it says the event would be canceled.
It's not fully funded.
I'm sorry?
In their application, it says the alternative plan is that the event would be canceled if they do not receive.
Instead of us denying.
The second choice then is to approve the amount requested. Favor for that? Opposed? Two to one? Okay, we'll put that outside, come back to it. Rock and Dill Farmers Institute, I assume that this poses that it goes ahead with any of these. Didn't go ahead this year, but the request is three thousand in-kind. Not as for traffic control and operations, et cetera. Any comment?
This is based on District of Sklarmer staff. Long shot, but I'll ask it anyway. If they were to contract a private company to do this work, is it a similar price ultimately to what we see here? I don't expect you to know, but maybe you do.
I haven't done, no, unfortunately, I wouldn't be able to answer that. They've just been using District of Sklarmer that we use. Last year.
I suspect there's a reason they use our stuff.
Yeah, well, and I suspect.
Because we only charge at cost.
Yeah. And I think this group is probably similar to the dog racing in that if they didn't get this kind of support, it would jeopardize the event. It's the kind of amount that would be a make or break.
I have a question here, this event didn't, I understand it didn't happen last year, so we had the in-kind number there, three thousand. Do we somehow, can we, as it didn't happen, is that something we can sort of claw back into this round of? How does that account for?
Through the chair, we could consider an accumulated surplus.
So just to clarify, so it would have just fallen into accumulated surplus because it was just money we didn't spend. Am I correct in saying that? So it ended up in last year's surplus.
Getting easier to support. It's already pretty easy.
So also just three thousand dollars as requested?
Two, four, twenty-seven forty-five ninety-one, exactly.
Oh, I beg your pardon, looking at the wrong number, sorry, twenty-seven forty-five ninety-one?
Make your money on this one.
Favor? Opposed? So that one, approved? Six, nothing. Number fifteen, Firefighters Association for the Guns and Hoses Event, eleven fifty-eight requested. Close to historic numbers, probably due to rates. Opposed? Six, nothing. Haasam Secondary for the graduation. Twenty-six eighty-seven, also close to historic rates. Favor? Opposed? Six, nothing. Make it home before midnight. Haasam Women's Center, this is for fifty-five hundred, this is for tipping fees. What this relates to, we've dealt with this before, is people just leaving stuff there that is of no use to them. And so they end up having to dispose of it.
I have questions about the logistics of that. Is this because there's a twenty-four hour drop-off, there's not someone to monitor, or are they unable to refuse things for some reason?
No, it's typically unmonitored, it's middle of the night kind of stuff, ends up in the back door. And they have to deal with it.
Yeah, just from experience as well, when you do drop things off and the staff is there, they don't tend to make you wait while they go through it. So it's essentially the same idea, they just take it all and then you leave them.
I was asking Shannon White about this one, about this sort of concept. And I see we've done this in the past and they've been used the full amount. I can understand the challenges there, but they've been thinking it's not a bad way into, around your tipping fees and a bunch of stuff you have at your house, just drop it off and someone else can deal with it, have they been working to mitigate that?
Well, my understanding is they don't actually see the cash. They in effect would have a credit if they dumped it.
No, no, that's how that works. Okay.
So it will also depend on what they have to take there up to the number that we grant.
Yeah, through the chair, that's, we have an account for the Women's Center and anything that's brought in, we just bill it off and charge it through to the grant.
That's an example, a separate bookkeeping between the utility and the general taxation.
No, we'd have reporting on that, but the reporting doesn't quite line up with our decision-making process. Reporting's in April, and we're deciding before December. To see how far they got hypothetically, how much they've used and if we're granting the appropriate amount.
They're always going to be a year behind on that.
So that in-kind one too, we have the records on that. So we would be able to tell you at the end of December thirty-first how much they ended up billing off and charging into here. I don't have my computer up here right now to tell you where we are right now, but that's, yeah.
This application was an example of, when she initially actually sent through the application, it was a lower amount. And we went through our records and I went back to her and said, oh, your, the current amount that you're requesting is not covering it. So we were able to sort of match it to a more reasonable estimate.
There goes my optimism that I thought this might be a touch higher, we might be able to get a bit back from that.
And that, it's a good point that Lily brings up through the chair. Just want to let you know that with the in-kind, we do, we do look at it in terms of what was council trying to offer. So if a facility rate did go up mid-year and now the facility rate was more, we will tend to honor that facility at its full cost because we take it as the intent of council that you were providing them that service. So we do adjust those from time to time as we need to, to, usually it's small enough dollar that it doesn't impact our greater budgets.
So the request is fifty-five hundred? Favor? Opposed? Number twenty-two, Lager Sports for license fees, rental fees, facility rent.
I think, sorry.
Sorry, excuse myself for this conflict in this.
Oh, you're part of the Lager Sports Committee?
I am not on the committee, nor am I on the board, but those, the event that they're trying to fund here, I'm the announcer slash mascot for. So I feel my involvement's a little bit, at least could be received.
Do you have one as well?
No.
The request is fifty-four sixty-seven seventy-four, thoughts on that?
This one is, you know, appears to be a near doubling. Is that again our fees have gone up that much or?
I believe it is, yes. I have the quote. Yeah, so the the quote from, they received from District of Sklarmer in September covers it for about four nine nine two ninety-seven. So I'm assuming they're just going up a little bit to cover what it might be by August next year. Yeah, again, this is like, because it's in-kind, if it doesn't, if they're suggesting five, four, six, seven, and we do grant that, but it turns out that when I get the report from recreation that it wasn't that amount, it was only like five, two, that's how much it would end up actually being.
Favor? Sorry, John, beg your pardon.
Noting that this includes a request for two hundred dollars to cover a beer garden license fee, I'm not comfortable with.
It's not our license fee, is it?
Our license, uh, no.
That would likely be the liquor license fee, I'm thinking.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Without actually going into the detail, my assumption would be that would be the liquor license fee through the BC Liquor Board.
So I'd prefer they cover that cost some other way.
Okay, so your suggestion is fifty-two sixty-seven seventy-four?
Yeah, so there's two costs associated there. Well, and permit fee, two hundred and seventy-five dollars, I don't know what the, this two hundred and seventy-five, is that also alcohol related?
I believe that's permitting fee through us. Correct? That would be.
That would be us, that's, is the B less than two hundred in the permit?
The permit fee would be there, yes, but it's the liquor license that would be two hundred, a cash, it should have probably been broken up into a cash value there.
So I'd like to see that reduced by two hundred dollars.
So your suggestion is fifty-two sixty-seven seventy-four?
Yes.
Favor? Opposed? Carries, somebody get, I don't know. Number twenty-three, Rant and Little Access Society Grant for Taxes, nine hundred dollars. They've made requests previously, those weren't for taxes, those were construction costs. And there has been, and I can't exactly tell you the numbers, but we as council have given them some funds to assist with their capital costs over the past one or two years, I think.
Perhaps longer, actually.
Maybe even longer, yeah, it's been under construction for a couple of years. But in any event, the grant request this year is nine hundred dollars for taxes.
In light of this being a new operation, I am comfortable with covering this this year. I'd like to see this organization be put on notice that we suggest they find in future years another way to cover this.
Watching and just have.
Just curious, with regards to the previous conversation on Sea to Sky and permissive tax exemptions, how does this fall into that conversation at that all? Would they be eligible for a permissive tax exemption or how is that different?
Through the chair, the McQuaid River Access Society missed the deadline quite a bit. They attempted to apply for the permissive tax exemption, but unfortunately, his application was far too late and it already started going to council.
Chris, I have the same question.
I like, I like what they're doing there is, and it has all sorts of implications sort of across the issues in permanent bank with hashtag ban license. See how we're talking about the low-cost camping and vehicles and there's some social aspects to it. So if there's ways we can support them, although if they missed under another process and we're going to cover it, they're miss with this, I'd rather be able to do, get through the normal process and then support them as well through something else. But in this case, I like, I like this.
So you're proposing, favor? Opposed? Carries, six, nothing. Minor hockey facilities, ice rental, et cetera. One swim pass for a hundred and seventy people need to turn the whole as well. So eleven thousand two hundred forty-five dollars fifty-nine cents. Is that all fees over the previous year? Does that increases?
I believe the one swim pass is a new initiative and it might be what is taking up the majority of the increase.
I'm looking here at the budget, it's eight thousand dollars, pretty close to eight thousand dollars for the ice rink and gym rentals. That's a, I wonder if, I can't see any information as to the year-to-year increase in the piece. There's changes in our fees and charges by law, what is represented in increased fees on the part of our, on our part. I would assume that the increase from three to eleven thousand must be accounted for in those facility rental numbers I'm looking at here.
Did you need to speak, Rob? If you have more information, by all means.
Through the chair, this looks like it's a new program and it's things that they've typically charged their membership for in the past. So this is referee clinic, so it's to train up members of our community to be referees. It's, there's some specific projects within, it looks like they're hosting two tournaments. And so they want to put on some activities or some hockey school activities that will be off ice. that will be off ice. It's, you know, in their, in their application thing, it talks about where they're going to be, what they're going to be doing, but they would typically probably float this through to their users before, this is, this is new, this hasn't been applied for to the district before, this twenty-five thousand dollars. Or eleven thousand dollars, sorry.
Eleven thousand, yeah.
Yeah.
Chris?
Yeah, it strikes me, hockey's not particularly affordable sport, I didn't see much information about how they make this inclusive to people without the funds to participate in hockey normally. I think we're being asked for a second ice sheet and new change rooms and so on, which would be a huge expense, and if they're already struggling with some of these basic things, how we can even contemplate, it's hard to reconcile how we'll even contemplate this, you know, these big massive infrastructure costs on top of it, so I guess in the context of everything, I'm not so inclined to support this one, it just doesn't seem consistent to me.
So let me float out, is anybody in favor of supporting to the extent we supported last year? Close to that concept?
I was, oh no, I was just going to suggest, if I may, Christine's just grabbing last year's application as well, if it would help your decision.
Question, if we're going to support it to accomplishing a similar thing that they did last year, I think the dollar value, because their fees and the, the costs are reflecting our fees, so somewhere in the probably five-thousand on range, shooting from the hip, fall apart that, at, and that would look at a similar level, I think the tournaments are great, they bring people, they bring people to hotels and restaurants, so I'm comfortable with that ask.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I'll just take Armin's thought on bringing people from out of town here as an economic driver. I like that aspect of, of this ask, and while eleven thousand dollars is significant amount of money, I would definitely like to see us fund this to some level, if not to full level.
Not being a part of the hockey ice hockey community, I'm interested to learn more, and I might suggest that we could put it on a tentative list of people to call back and explain their story a little bit more for us, but just a tentative listing, but it's an end of the year list.
Okay, I had to table that one for the moment, just like the first one, and we'll come back to it when we have some information together, unnecessarily a delegation, but we'll come back to that one. Number twenty-nine, Pirate Swim Club.
Sorry, acting out of ways, we did actually poll last year's too, just to clarify.
Go ahead.
Difference, if you'd like us to do that now.
So we're back on twenty-three then?
Sorry.
Big pardon, we're back on twenty-five.
So the description of for last year was, the reason of the grant was to, the Swamish Association would post two events, require the use of the Swamish Chief Activity Room, one for a fundraiser in January, and the second for an awards banquet in April, and the black task room rentals for temporary dressing rooms during tournaments, that was the purpose, that was the covering of last year's.
So there is additional ask, for sure.
Yeah, so this is the ice rentals, the activity room for their tournament, for Adam C tournament, ice rentals and activity room for Adam A tournament, one swim pass for each participant, the two tournaments, a hundred and seventy players, two adventure center theater rentals, two hours per tournament for movie nights, and then, as Robin said, there's the rental for referee clinic, rental for coaching clinic, activity room for awards banquet, which was, was last year, activity room for AGM, and a Swamish Chief Activity Room for GSWAP event as well, and more added on.
And I assume there would be fees for this, these events and things as well, so certainly something to consider.
Go ahead. Yeah, looking closer at this in section C, I think that's sort of supporting the, they've got it broken down into two pieces, a smaller piece being two thousand dollars, which would be the, the rental covering the referee clinic and fruition clinic and awards banquet and the AGM and the GSWAP, and that totals two thousand dollars, I think I'd admit my support, I think that that sort of keeps in, in staff with what we're supporting, similar to what we're supporting last year, and supports them in the initiative, and the rest of the nine thousand additional, was a step for the whole.
So you're suggesting this for two thousand?
Two thousand, thirty-four, twenty-four, seems to be the, the amount, thank God, they have a number this schedule here, but under section, under their section C described project, there's a set, broken out piece.
Page five hundred and thirty, if you can.
Yeah, it's just conveniently located on page five hundred and thirty, seven hundred and seventy-two.
My finger's tempered.
Yeah.
Any other comments around that?
Just one from us, that if you are going to make a decision like that, you might want to leave it a little bit open for us to re-cost and make sure that those rooms are the same value that they put on their application, because we've just got a costing for the whole.
All in favor? Close?
Can I add to Armin's suggestion of including the two adventure center theater rentals, two hours for the adventure center?
How much is that?
A hundred and two dollars.
Each?
It would appear to me that the adventure center is part of a package, a, a program, I'm just lacking information, I could probably go back and see more in, in their report here and study it a bit more closely, I'm, I'm not sure whether that isn't part of the...
Okay, continue Shelby, and we'll just move on, we'll come back. Number twenty-nine, Swim Club, same ask as previous years for Swim Eat and Facility Rental, twenty-nine, thirty-four, oh seven.
I like Sporkus.
Favor? On favor? Close? Carries. Skate C2 Sky, grant to cover cost of facility rental for annual Christmas ice show. Asked for and received a thousand dollars last year. Request this year is twenty-two-hundred-eighty-two-fifty-seven. Any thoughts? Is that all facility rental?
Is that a part of, again, is that purely an increase, or is that like two shows for the, most, more than, being more than double?
I believe last year they didn't request.
That number doesn't look like a grant in aid, it's in cash.
I think they do their shows every two years, so last year's request might have been for something else.
They do it every, they have them doing it, they did last year, they're doing it this year, and doing it, and then will do it next year, so.
We can, we'll poll last year's and have a report.
We'll start off with tri, twenty-two-eighty-two-fifty-seven, in favor? Close? Favor? Anybody opposed? Carries.
So that was thirty-six?
Number thirty-six, yeah. Youth Triathlon. Tri B C fees. It's different than previous year, I think. So that's actually not in-kind, that's cash that's being requested, is it?
Uh, youth triathlon?
Yeah.
That's in-kind, but it says to cover the tri.
So it's going to another party.
I read through this one, and I popped my eye as well, and as much as I mentioned the, the fees here, this first page, did actually look through the application, they're not asking for anything to do with fees, I think they're just upset about the fees, but it doesn't seem to actually relate to what they're asking for, they're asking for a specific, specific.
Listen to the floor.
I don't understand that, I see.
I believe, I can only suggest that perhaps the, because I do know that the person who did hand in the application did it in extreme rush, and she did, handed slightly late, but it, same as last year, it has, it was for their rental fees.
Full rental in guard. Full rental in guard.
Yes.
Private rental. Black task room, Swamish Chief Room, aquatic center, yeah.
Okay, so I'm left scratching my head, because it would seem to me that the Pirates request and the Youth Triathlon request are very similar, the Pirates are looking for the same amount as last year, which kind of surprised me, because I sort of thought the lifeguards get an increase in their pay each year, which would say to me, that should go up, and then we've got similar requests with Youth Triathlon where they're looking for significantly more. Just so I'm curious about the discrepancies there.
The note at the bottom of page six-hundred-and-eighty is that the last year's amount was nineteen-eighty-seven-sixty-three, and there's a note to the effect that in-kind contribution is corrected to twenty-one-ninety-seven-thirty based on current vote from Recreation Center.
Here we go.
Yeah, so if I may, when she did hand in the application rather rushed, it wasn't, the quote wasn't supplied with it, and I, we chased it up and added it later, so the, the actual quote from, from District Swamish is, yeah, twenty-one-ninety-seven-thirty to cover the rental fees.
I can understand why it'd be less than the other one, just because it's probably a shorter period of time, okay, a couple of hours. So I'll suggest twenty-one-ninety-seven-thirty, in favor? Close anyway? Carries. So we're now on the cash and in-kind requests. Starting off with number eleven, Downtown Swamish Business Improvement Association, I'm just continuing on the same page. Historically, they've made both requests for cash and in-kind, in-kind is traffic control, barriers, rentals, et cetera, in the district, the cash part is, is more.
So two things, the first, and I think staff highlighted it as well, I think their budgets for some of these events tripled recently, and I'm wondering if that makes sense, and if we should be funding that on top of it, and the other thing, my understanding was BIA has some ability to mandate downtown businesses to pay into them, and maybe I missed it, but I didn't see that in their, their budgeting or revenue.
So through the chair, they are under a business improvement area, and so they do tax annually for business improvements in the downtown, I can't speak to whether it's in that application, I'm sorry, I'll have to pass that over to, so they do have an ability to revenue generate for downtown improvements and, and activities, but the, is there?
That's one of the key aspects of the Business Improvement Association, is they do get the power to levy and affect taxes on their members within, within a particular area.
Yeah, that's what I thought, and I don't think I saw revenue.
See, the projects are taken on as having a benefit to the, to the whole, I mean, Canada Day, yeah, does bring people downtown, but it's a, it's not driven by a sales event or something, it's a celebration day, it's a pumpkin patch, and it doesn't like Santa Claus, it's a Christmas parade, but the increase here is, is substantial, and I wonder what our ability is to request or to amend it to the plans, so it's, it's, if we can't find room for it otherwise, but it does seem like a dramatic increase, to me, and it isn't really that portion that I'm comfortable with at this time.
We have a new, new team at the Downtown BIA, and with a new ambition level regarding bringing in professional acts and new, new ambitions generally, particularly for Canada Day, I would like to suggest a delegation from the Downtown Swamish BIA to discuss with us their plans further. I also note they would like some feedback from us by December tenth, as they plan to be engaged in booking large acts, and that puts the pressure on us, but I'd like to encourage a discussion with them.
Yeah, my thought with this one was, obviously they're expanding the scope of their celebration, and, and that's great, but I don't know that we want to necessarily go hand-in-hand with them, and I would be prepared to support them at last year's level for cash and this year's level for in-kind requests, just assuming their costs have gone up a little bit, and leave it at that, but open to suggestions from anybody else for comments? And there's one suggestion for a delegation.
I guess I, we're talking about relatively large numbers here, in the context of everything, so I'd be a bit hesitant to approve any amount without hearing a bit more from them, and I don't know that a lesser amount would be a value to them.
Yeah, I'd like to see how they handle the, the lesser amount, whether we're, we're sacrificing one of these, one of these events, or if it was in, or if they would scale that up through, or how that would be handled, so I think it might be, we'll be, some conversations more about that.
So we'll put this one on the delegation list, number eleven. Number thirty-two, Rebuild Society. This is new. Looking for two thousand cash and two thousand in-kind for tipping fees, two thousand cash for trailer.
A question on this one, it strikes me as interesting that we didn't have tipping fees and in-kind for this program last year, I'm sure that they, just given the nature of what they do, did they, is that an oversight, or did that come, or is that prompted through a different avenue that we're not seeing here?
Yeah. They have been previously having their fees waived, but it wasn't coming through the grant program, so we've, we picked up on that, that that was happening, and we've advised them to come through the proper channels in order to, to properly administrate those charges.
We have in the past had a relationship with Rebuild because of the solid waste implications, obviously, there's been partnerships in the past, it's just an oversight.
John?
I support the tipping fee and not the trailer.
Chris?
I guess this is one in particular, I was wondering why servicing agreement, it seems like it makes sense for us ongoing, it's part of our waste management, and, and so is there a reason why we would not do a servicing agreement or something with that?
It's a good question, honestly, I think that it could be something you consider with solid waste, we can talk to the solid waste team more about it.
Who else?
I'm supportive of the trailer, I think that it's a huge part of how they deliver their service, it's really hard to get some of these materials, folks don't always have a truck or a car, and so they do provide pickup, which I think is an important part to the service in terms of trying to divert waste out of our landfill, is for them to be able to provide a service to go pick it up.
Okay, so I'm going to separate the two out, the in-kind of two thousand dollars, in favor? Close? That carries. The cash requested of two thousand dollars, in favor? Close? Carries, both carry. Senior Society, number thirty-five, cash twenty-four hundred for monies to cover liquor license insurance and facility rental for eight social events, and in-kind nineteen-eighty-six-seventy-five.
I, again, would like to see the liquor license taken out.
You know what amount that is?
Obvious.
Hopefully two hundred dollars, because that's what the last one was.
It's probably less, actually.
It's probably less, actually, because it would be a special location license, which is separate from a larger beer garden, probably not very much.
I have eight liquor licenses, that's $25 each, comes to 200. Well, no, because there's eight. You're right, Nancy.
Chris?
So the Senior Society, as I understand, sort of operates out of the Activity 55 Center. I think they're tied into that program, and I was just sort of wondering where the line is and why this is part of just our rec services budget.
There's still a separate society, as far as I know.
That's right, it's a separate society, having their own functions in our facility.
Do they still pay rental? For the class? So once again, we'll deal with them separately, so the 198675 would not include the liquor licenses, because those don't come to us. So in favor? Close. That one carries. No, it won't come off the other, so it's a whole 1900. So the 2,400, which has been suggested should be 2,200, so I'll start off saying, we're, go ahead, Chris.
Do they, is the insurance tied to the liquor licenses, like if they don't have the liquor license, do they need insurance?
Yeah, they need it. That's standard, I think, with our.
In barter sports, that beer garden licensing fee was under in-kind.
Under which one? Yeah, it was, but it's not, we took it out anyway.
Facility in question here is an underutilized facility, we're trying to encourage better use of it, and I'm happy to waive a couple hundred dollars here or there from, but I'd like to propose the support of at least 2,200.
All in favor? Close. So just, in a perfect world, we'd get through one slash of this before we went home tonight. I think we were tentatively scheduled to go to 5 o'clock, is it 5 o'clock or 5:30? 5 o'clock?
5.
Oh, we have it on camera after. So let's stop at 5. And we'll carry this on, I'll leave it up to staff to reschedule this for continuation. So we'll go to 5 o'clock, drop this, go on camera. No, I missed the channel, sorry.
You should have.
Yeah, that was it.
Now you got two more pages, it's a big ask here.
Why don't we stop here? So it leaves the cash only request, plus the couple outstanding, and so far we have one delegation request.
I guess the only question to the chair would be any concern that we have about giving enough notice of delegation. So we have scheduled for December 11th, we would definitely will not want to wait too late to tell them to attend, so I don't know if you want to do maybe a sweep and see if there's anyone else you might want to bring in as a delegation, so that we can at least give most of them a heads up.
You can take a shot at that, sure. John?
I'd like to hear from the Climate Action Network. And cutting barriers.
Cutting barriers? So that's eight and 10? Anybody else?
I was looking for a discussion on 37, which was the Trail Society that Valley think connects your trail on, I think I've touched this earlier with active transportation. I think that I've seen around here during this, around the portion during this, these discussions have been finding, maybe we should be covering some of this stuff under existing programs in another way, and I think there's a strong argument for that one to be used as a transportation, a connector, a safety school threshold, that I, which we may have just discussed.
I'll go to staff and then Eric.
This organization was one of the organizations that I can provide more information on. When Sorka put through their application last year for their three-year multi-year grant, they actually included two other organizations, Sorka, ETL, and essentially, the Trail Society came under that grant.
Yeah, and the Dirt Bike Association.
Yes, right.
So three of them.
Yes.
Because they share the same trails.
Yes, that's right. So it might be worth counsel's consideration that technically, they've already gotten a grant to cover their trail maintenance.
Eric, and then, did you have your hat, Chris?
Yes, the Trail Society project, I would argue, is not an active transportation thing, but it is, has some other context, and that is, there is property nearby that is at risk. Secondly, district operations are already examining this situation, so that I think that the discussion around this project should be expanded. Thirdly, the report that we have from the geologists is three, four years out of date, so I think it does deserve further discussion.
Yeah, not necessarily delegation, so definitely discussion.
With the scope of this, is it appropriate for us to have a, find another way to meet prior to the, instead of the possibility to get further through this? That's maybe our only chance to see delegations before our deadline, where we're just sort of running it halfway.
No, so, go ahead.
Well, I was going to ask you if it was a. Knew it was coming.
A chance to be on the December 4th agenda.
Well, currently, if I might through the chair, we have a committee of the whole in the afternoon, special close, clear afternoon, and then the regulars that evening, however, at this time, there's nothing on the agenda for the regular. So what could happen is.
Regular is on?
At this time. I know, shocking. So the risk is that things will come forward for the regular, although it's due today on the 4th. We could make the committee of the whole all day on the 4th.
What special meaning?
It's been a really long day on the 4th and the 3rd, don't forget you're doing strategic planning from 9 to 2. The other alternative is you've got the 3rd, the 10th, and the 17th bookmark for strategic planning, and we're only going to use two of those, you could use the 10th or the 7th, you could use the 10th for this and the 17th for strategic planning.
Yeah, my thought is, this is sometimes easier to deal with in small bites, and so we've been at this for, after we got through the initial discussion, for just over an hour, and we actually thought reasonable amount accomplished. Well, now we get into the actual cash, which is a little more painful, but I'd be happy if we could schedule an hour to two hours on next Tuesday. That would be, hopefully that will identify at least the delegations, so that we can have them come in the following week, and at least accomplish that part of it. Yeah, I mean, it should give us, if we sort of focus, it should give us time to run through the cash list at least once, and identify those which we want to talk about. So, sorry, Chris?
Yeah, two things, I have some questions around the Chekamos Foundation one, and I don't know if they need them as a delegation answer or not, but that's one I have some questions about. And I'm also wondering in general, if for next meeting, staff is able to provide some assessment of the total of in-kind asks for district facilities and services and so on, versus our total revenue from those things in a year, or our total revenue from nonprofits in a year, so just some sense of how big a chunk we are giving away.
Can I get clarification on the statistic you're requesting through the chair?
So I think, you know, a number of these have been for district facilities, which we charge the general public for generally, and that's that number, and what portion of it have we been waving through the grant process?
Of the total revenues?
Yeah.
Okay, not, I just wanted to clarify that you weren't looking for just nonprofit uses of facility revenue.
Well, I think ways through the grant process is really where you're going, is it, am I referencing?
Yeah, I'm still trying to wrap my head around, is it better to deal with this in the service of these bylaw, or are these truly exceptions, and we should deal with them?
Fair enough, so I think what we're talking about is 2018 for years.
Right, but I, for clarification, sorry to belabor this point, but we, I don't believe we keep statistics necessarily that are easily pulled to know if a facility's been rented by a nonprofit or a commercial entity. I don't know that I have that statistic, if that's what you're asking for.
It'd be ideal, but if the best we have is just a total number, then that's better.
I'd have to see what Recreation keeps, if they keep some of that information, we do not keep it in our systems.
Oh, and there's a lot of nonprofits would pay the full shot.
That's, I believe, what the heart of the question is, is how, would this be better to deal with the fees restructure to allow a nonprofit amount in the fees bylaw versus keep hitting it through the grant processes? I believe that's what I'm following.
First choice, I guess, would be the statistic on nonprofits generally, and the second choice would be the grant process monies.
Or just, you know, total revenues from services and fees, and maybe we can't bring it to nonprofits.
Well, as a fraction of the total revenue.
If we can, yeah.
Yeah, we can certainly bring you that, the latter. I would have a hard time, I believe, bringing you statistics about how many other nonprofits actually pay for the facilities. I don't know if we keep that, I'd have to check with Recreation.
Yeah, my interest would be the percentage of the overall revenue of that facility, or facilities if it has to be broader, that we're using through this grant program, similar, and it might help inform the policy as far as those percentages, we can apply some different thresholds if we're pushing.
Certainly, we can bring back a demographic like that, yes.
Okay, anything else before we change topics?
So really, I have a question Armin brought up earlier, what are the different approaches we can take individually with these projects, with some questions that we have? Two of them, the Waldorf School and the Trail Society on the Blue Swamp Stream, I have project planning questions. Can I, what is the protocol for me to go to the organization, ask questions privately? Is there a protocol around that?
Yeah, so grant application, go through staff. Staff will ask the question.
We can follow up more, point out more. So was there a specific question you'd like us to?
Yes, I can deliver them to you, copying to rest of council. And I have a few for the other, the other project that is a large ask is Montessori School, and I wanted to suggest that perhaps that might be here, or at least, I have several questions I'd like to deliver to staff.
Yeah, rather than guess it to delegations, let's take a run through it next week, that will give us time for the delegations the week following. If we identify them, do a run through next week, then we'll see if we run delegation up.
Very good.
Nothing more than this, I'm going to look for a motion to close. Counselor Sloner, second by Counselor French, in favor? Motion carries and adds.